All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Little. I'm the mayor of the District of North Vancouver, and so the pleasure falls to me to welcome you all here to the fourth night of our 1,200 block East Keith Road. Public hearing for rezoning. I get it is a quasi judicial setting, so I'm going to just start out tonight by reading our script. It's going to take me a couple of minutes and then we'll get immediately into public input at that point. So here we go. This public hearing is being reconvened pursuant to section four, six, four of the Local Government Act, and is being held in a hybrid meeting format, meaning there is a combination of in-person and electronic participation by some or all members of the council staff and the public. The chair has established the following rules for this hearing. We will continue with the established speakers list. At the end of the speakers list, the chair may call for any other speakers not on the speakers list. You will have five minutes to address counsel. Begin your remarks to counsel by stating your name. After speakers have spoken once, they will then be allowed one additional five-minute opportunity. Any additional presentations will only be allowed at the discretion of the chair. Please do not repeat information from your previous presentations and ensure your comments remain focused to the bylaw under consideration this evening. If you've provided a written submission, there is no need to read it as it will have already been seen by counsel. You may summarize or briefly reiterate the highlights of your submission, but ensure your comments pertain to the bylaw under consideration at this hearing. All members of the audience are asked to be respectful of one another as diverse opinions are expressed. Counsel wishes to hear everyone's views in an open and impartial forum. Some important notes about public hearings. Counsel is here to listen to the public, not to debate the merits of the bylaw. Counsel may ask clarifying questions. The clerk has a binder containing documents and submissions related to the bylaw which counsel has received and which you are welcome to review. This is available at the table next to the door and online at dnv.org/agenda. Everyone at the hearing will be provided an opportunity to speak. If necessary, we will continue the hearing on a fifth night. At the conclusion of the public input, counsel may request further information from staff, which may or may not require an extension of the hearing. Or counsel may close the hearing, after which counsel should not receive further new information from the public. Finally, please note that this hearing is being held via Zoom and recorded in accordance with the Freedom of Information Protection of Privacy Act. We did want to also pass along that the microphone, you do need to sit and speak fairly closely into the microphone. Some of the recordings aren't as clear as we'd like them to be, and so if people could just make sure that they're speaking directly into the microphone when you're here at this space. There is one other thing I wanted to note is that the the council is here, 100% of the council, so Council Murray is joining us virtually, but all other members of the council are here in the room, and so with that you have the full attention of the whole council. I did just want to say that even though we we are having this as its own separate night, it's actually a part of the previous three nights. And in those, we first exhausted the first-time speakers list, and then we allowed people to speak a first or second time, and then when we exhausted that group, we allowed first, second, and third-time speakers. And because it's all sort of treated as one public hearing, that's where we start tonight. And so the list of speakers that I have before me, while it may have first, second, or third-time speakers, it's in the order in which people ask to sign up to speak. So I know a number of people came out to be first-time speakers thinking that they'd get to be right at the front end of the meeting. The order is already set in the speakers list, and so I'm gonna read those out. I believe we have a speakers list presented on the slide here, and that does represent first, second, and third-time speakers coming forward. To the third-time speakers in the room, again, as I said in the intro, a third-time speaking is done at the discretion of the chair, but as long as you haven't been repeating yourself, I have no good reason to not give you a third opportunity to speak. But I am going to be a little more aggressive about pressing you to not be repeating your previous representations. We're here to hear new additional comments specific to the bylaw tonight. So the third-time speakers, I'm going to be a little bit more aggressive about pressing you alone. At this point, we have the list that's been established. It includes first, second, and third-time speakers in this order. When we exhaust this list, we'll come back out to the room and see if anyone else would like to add their name, plus also the virtual participants, same. They'll raise their virtual hands and we'll continue. So with that, I'd like to go right into it. You don't need to reintroduce the bylaw. That's already been done. And so the next speaker that we have is Ali Hummel, followed by Mo Katemi. Is Ali Hummel here in person or virtual? And if you hear your name coming up and you're a virtual participant raising your hand or having your name, your virtual name match, your name on the list is very helpful. I don't see Ali Hummel. Okay, so I'm going to say not here. And then what's going to happen is when we get to the end of the list, I'm going to circle back through to the people who are not here at the name, time their name was called, and we'll just check in and see if they've they've joined the meeting late. Mo Katemi. James Holtrough. Followed by Steve Mitchell. So fantastic. So when you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing. Welcome.
Hard to be comfortable, but I'll do my best.
It's up to you.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate letting me take the time. I'd like to express my firm opposition to the proposed zoning bylaw change that would allow for the establishment of a housing facility catering to hard drug users in Lynn Valley. While the intention to address housing needs in our community is commendable, I believe that this particular proposal raises significant concerns that must be thoroughly addressed before any decisions are made. First and foremost, let us acknowledge the pressing issue of housing scarcity for Lynn Valley locals, including hard-working individuals and retired seniors living on pensions. It is undeniable that our community needs affordable housing. However, we must question the prioritization of a facility that caters specifically to hard-drug users over addressing the housing needs of the working poor and seniors. The proposal lacks clarity on the definition of a local resident. The vague wording leaves room for ambiguity, potentially allowing anyone to migrate to Lynn Valley, pushing a shopping cart across the Second Narrows Bridge and setting up camp under a tarp with the hope of approval. We must ensure that any housing initiatives are designed to benefit and support our existing community members, not inadvertently invite individuals with no genuine connection to our district. Speaking of the working poor and seniors, where is the plan to concentrate on their housing needs? Let us direct our efforts towards providing safe, affordable, and sustainable housing for these vulnerable groups rather than focusing on a facility that raises legitimate concerns about safety and community well-being. One major concern is the potential impact of supportive housing on our neighborhood. There is a fear that such a facility will attract hard drugs to our community, posing a threat to the safety of residents. Despite assurances that the proposed facility will be dry, questions arise about how residents who are addicts will access drugs and how their financial struggles might lead to increasing property crimes, such as thefts from sheds, cars, and houses. Additionally, the proposed building's location is troubling. It is situated too far from essential services like hospitals and police stations, raising serious questions about the safety and well-being of both the residents and the community at large. Placing vulnerable individuals beside a highway poses additional risks, such as the potential for accidents if they were to walk onto the highway or cross streets without caution. Consider the impact on families and children, particularly in the vicinity of seven daycares within 50 to 900 meters of the proposed site. What data supports the claim that the visibility of open drug use will have no negative impact on children? And what mitigation strategies does the district have in place? Brisbane Park, known for being full of kids, may not face the threat of becoming littered with needles jeopardizing the safety of our children. It is essential to prioritize the well-being of our community's youth and ensure that the public spaces remain safe and free from potential hazards. Moreover, the argument that some housed residents in Lynn Valley use drugs does not equate to supporting a facility catering specifically to hard-drug users. Enjoying a glass of wine or consuming illegally purchased edible from the B C cannabis store is not comparable to the severe issues associated with addiction to fentanyl-laced drugs. We must also question the effectiveness of concentrating individuals with addiction issues in one building. Is there data that proves this approach is beneficial, or are there alternative strategies that may be more effective in promoting rehabilitation and community integration? Before making a decision that will have far-reaching consequences, I implore the council to consider the lack of data supporting the success and safety of this project. It appears rushed with incomplete assessments in critical areas such as environmental impact, emergency health services, police reports, traffic implications, and overall community safety. We should not rush into a decision without comprehensive information on potential risks and benefits. Let's not forget the impact on the voting public, the residents of this area, whose property values and safety will be directly affected by this decision. How can we ensure accountability and transparency when there are no criminal record checks for potential residents? Moreover, I urge the council to provide clarity on the rationale for fast-tracking. What documented criteria constitute a proposal of being fast-tracked, especially when several crucial assessments, environmental, emergency, health, and police, and traffic remain incomplete? If these assessments exist, the public deserves access to this information. Finally, the statistics and data presented in the proposal are outdated and irrelevant to the specific project site. Drawing comparisons to far-off locations from a long time ago does not provide an accurate representation of the potential impacts in our community. We must base our decisions on current relevant information that reflects the unique challenges and opportunities presented by the project. In conclusion, while I understand the need for compassionate and effective solutions to address housing challenges in our community, this particular proposal raises too many unanswered questions and concerns. Let us not compromise the safety and well-being of our community members in the pursuit of a solution that lacks a solid foundation of data and careful consideration of potential risks. I implore the council to reconsider and explore alternate solutions that prioritize the diverse needs of our community while ensuring safety and prosperity of Lynn Valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, James Holtrough. The next speaker I have is Steve Mitchell, followed by Graham Alexander. Irene on the list has withdrawn her name to speak. So the next speaker is Steve Mitchell, followed by Graham Alexander.
Hi, my name is Steve Mitchell. I grew up on the North Shore. I'm raising my family on the North Shore. I live on Mountain Highway in Art Berlin, just north of the proposed site and within sight of it. I felt it important to come speak in person, but I'm curious to counsel, is is there a number on Zoom of how many people are watching tonight, out of curiosity?
There's 58 virtual attendees.
Okay, thank you. And how many of those would have their hand up to speak? Do you know?
I don't know that.
Okay, fair enough. I'd like to express my concerns and opposition to the proposed Keith supportive housing zoning application. While I acknowledge the need for supportive housing and appreciate the complexities involved in addressing the issue, I find it challenging to support the current proposal based on the lack of transparency and assurance provided to the community, especially outside of these meetings. Throughout the various community meetings and discussions on this matter, I have encountered several issues that remain unsolved, and I believe it is essential to address them before moving forward with the project. My concerns are shared by most in the community, and I feel compelled to voice them. One of the primary concerns is the lack of transparency surrounding the proposal. Despite attending all the meetings and engaging with the community, there is a prevailing sense that critical issues raised by residents have not adequately been addressed. Obviously, I won't go into all those that have been stated. Without sufficient insurances, I am unable to support the construction of the supportive housing facility in our community. Additionally, there are questions that have not been adequately addressed or brought up in the discussions thus far. For instance, the assertion that every dollar spent on the $35 million bill will result in $5 back to the community requires further scrutiny. While the initial boost in construction-related employment is acknowledged, doubts linger regarding the supposed savings in emergency services and $2 million, $2.5 million annual cost to staff and run this. You know, not being close to police and hospital makes me question that as well as, you know, some of the other savings that were claimed earlier. Furthermore, concerns about the screening process for residents pose a significant worry. The lack of clarity on whether individuals with criminal records, including sex offenders, will be admitted into the facility raises serious safety concerns for families in proximities of schools, daycares, and parks. It is essential to prioritize the safety of our community first. Lastly, the potential stigmatization of community members who oppose this proposal is disheartening. Standing up for our community should not label us as elitist, entitled, racist, or being a NIMBY. We are merely advocating for the safety and well-being of our community, which is a valid and essential concern. We have worked hard to be here. I urge you to reconsider the current location, or alternatively, consider offering the space to low-income working individuals, families, or seniors in need. This approach would address the housing needs while minimizing potential risks to the community. While it seems like the project may proceed despite our concerns, please be assured that myself and the fellow neighbors will be holding this government and council to account. We expect the assurances made in your research, such as the rehabilitation of at-risk individuals' safety and positive impact on property values, to be upheld. We also request the fulfillment of promises such as the provision of a direct front desk phone line to the facility as mentioned by Kevin at Luma in a previous meeting. Thank you for your attention to these matters. I hope that further dialogue and consideration will lead to a resolution resolution that balances the needs of the community with the goals of supportive housing initiatives. As I've got a few more seconds to, I didn't know where I'd be speaking in order tonight, assuming it would probably be later. My two daughters would like to come and voice their concerns potentially, and so you hear it from young people that are in our community as well, which unfortunately I could not have them here without, you know, sitting through hours of meetings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next speaker is Graham Alexander, followed by Tara Ibrahimee. And again, just the comment I said off the top end, third-time speakers, please don't repeat presentations from your past two iterations, but when you're comfortable, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
You're not working? Okay, before you start the five minutes, Mr. Gordon, I need about a minute to upload the pictures. Is that okay?
Is it a different presentation?
It's a different presentation, completely different. Is that okay? And in the meantime, I'd like to talk while it's doing.
Then we're going to run the time, but.
No, no, I mean, I have to upload the pictures, all right, because I'm going to talk about your campaign and what you've done as mayor, all right? Anyway, if you're going to not respect that, all right, you're not going to respect that, Mr. Mayor. That's not right. I haven't even got my thing up, but I'm going to talk over my five minutes, and you're going to have to call the RCMP to kick me out, because this is not this is not the right way to go, okay? I want to give back to my community millions of dollars, all right? You guys had a campaign, and the private sector and the public sector have to work together. You have Expo 86, you have the Olympics 2010, and you have the FIFA World Cup coming up. Now, I have a proposal for you, Mr. Mayor. 108 tiny mobile homes, which is working all over the world. The project this proposed is doomed. It's a public-sector project, and you need to listen to me carefully, Mayor. This is a public sector project. No private sector is involved, okay? You campaigned on this in the North Shore News. What a disaster. Okay, I'm coming in to do GGIQ, state runners of the RCMP, the District of North Vancouver, B C Housing Coastal Health to work together and create red zones. Red zones are areas where drugs will be served by, in areas which are not family, not business areas, to supply the drugs, okay? I have an app all over the world. It's an app where you can schedule deliveries and gather data, okay? It gives the tools to D N V, homeless, and coastal health, and to the community to show compassion and to give. Look at what this entrepreneur is giving to you. This guy, he, red tape, no communication. Murray, we're in the toilet. How are you guys going to get yourself out of the toilet? It's the truth. We're in a tough situation. This, but this, this lady, she knows what, if you listen to what she says, she's a smart woman, that she knows what she's doing. And Mr. Ma, I do have a solution for you guys. You bring the RCMP involved. We're going to have GPS and camera heat sensor control for red zones. Okay, on my app, we're going to have criminal control. The community is going to be involved, and we're going to have everyone sheltered through GPS and heat sensors. How we're going to do this, we're going to have drug zones in a community that are not in the main area. So basically, wherever there is no drug, there's no families or no businesses, that's where you guys can serve the drugs. It's a solution, and it's a very important solution. If you create the red zones and schedule deliveries administered by Vancouver Coastal Health and patrolled by the RCMP, you have control over the drug problem. Mayor, I know you're a smart guy, so I want you to pay close attention to this one. If you guys are going to put this project right here, 24/7 security, you need security guards and four people to 24-hour service with the RCMP to make sure that this place is safe. I have M59, which is a set of goals for people to get better over time. I will make these people work and get off their welfare checks. They're going to work with Upwork and Fever, and we're going to get them to work at the facility. I also have Savon Foods and Costco, that we can also donate food, and people can get involved in the community, such as they can basically give compassionate food, drinks, money, towels, clothing, anything they want, okay, through the app, because that's changing, okay? The world is changing right now, and you guys are behind the times. You guys are way behind anything. This is possibly the slowest of all in North America, and I can prove it, because I go all over North America, and I've talked to many mayors, and you guys are very slow. And you want feedback from the community? Too much money and too much time. I have a solution. Bitcoin to every single person that does, that wants to contribute. We can have that part of the app, okay? GGQ, big developers, Jimmy Patterson, they don't want to touch the District of Vancouver, Kyle Washington doesn't want to touch it, because you guys take too long. We need solutions. I have the solution right here. 24-hour everything. 24-hour everything. FSR 10, that's the solution. What have I done in the past? I solved a problem for the Chilwak. The hill was falling down. It was all over the news. I solved a problem with them. We built a massive subdivision. I've done over $50 million of developments here in the District of North Vancouver. I did Bond Street, I did Rupert Street, and I also did what's it, Mountain and Keith, and I also, I'm going to work, want to work with a pilot to redefine how to deal with the homeless. All right, so rezone the entire property immediately. Put me in charge of the project. That's the private sector. And we want to give you guys a chance. Let's get out of this mess. We're in a mess, guys. We can do three stories, go up to five stories, and 10 stories of tiny homes. Win-win for the community, homeless and business, and I want to start with Tasman Guppy, that we can get the project started with Norman Laub as the project manager, who's the former CEO of the City of Surrey Development and Omnicron Developers. Thank you very much, Mayor. I hope you guys listen, because I listened to you guys' workshop, and there's no communication. I talked to D N V. I'm talking to Blank Wall. Okay, this woman, I would marry this woman, because she is basically doing exactly what this city should be doing. And this guy wants solutions. He's a lawyer. Mister, I will work for $1 a year. And I'm from North Vancouver. Thanks, guys.
The next speaker I have is Tara Ibrahimee, followed by Paula Newfeld. Is Tara on the meeting virtually or in person?
I am virtual today.
Virtual, okay. Welcome, while I can hear you clearly, and welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. So my name is Tara Ibrahimee. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council for having me tonight. I was born and raised in North Vancouver, and I'm currently an owner at 680 Sealing Crescent. I want to start this by saying that I will always support supportive housing, as I was raised by a single mother, and understand the difficulties finding housing that is affordable in North Vancouver. But I want to voice my concerns with the location of this housing and what services it is offering other than housing for people in need. I want to start with the location. The Keith Road and Brooksbank intersection was under construction for as long as I remember, trying to make the intersection more accessible and driver-friendly. I work on Lonze on 14th, and on a good day, takes me 20 to 30 minutes to drive home after work to Seiling Crescent, when it previously took me seven to 10 minutes to drive home, and that's following the speed limit. If there's an accident, then it could take me up to an hour. I've numerously parked my car on the side of the street and walked down Keith, as it took less time to get home that way. I bring this up because first, you're proposing this new development on the corner of one of the busiest intersections on the North Shore, which will probably take approximately three to five years to complete. In that three to five years, that will cause more traffic than there already is. Another issue would be that after development has been completed, how will first responders attend the site? The traffic is gridlocked, and on some evenings, making it very hard for first responders to even attend the site alone, and not even including residents trying to get home. And I just want to share my screen for the next point. So my second point would be the regulated drug use will be onsite. Please see the pictures on the screen that shows the housing in North Vancouver. I was driving by and noticed that people camping outside the street. When I parked my car to take a picture, I noticed more tenting and evidence of drug use on the public street. This is honestly not what I want for the neighborhood I grew up in. We used to feel safe in North Vancouver, but now I'm walking my neighborhood in the fear of stepping on something that is not safe, or someone sleeping in bushes in the trails and me startling them. I also want to mention that there's feces left in the trails, and we all have dogs, and the dogs do get attracted to it, and it's making it very unsafe for us, for children, and for dogs to be in the trails. I hope that Mayor and Council please reconsider the location of the supportive housing, and please challenge the province on what kind of housing we're placing in the backyard in the District of North Vancouver. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of my neighborhood.
Thank you very much for your comments, Tara Ibrahimee. The next speaker I have is Paula Newfeld, followed by Sam Jones. I believe Paula is virtual. You are muted, Paula. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, welcome. You have five additional minutes to, sorry, you're a first-time speaker. You have five minutes to speak to the hearing.
Great, thank you very much. So I've been a resident of the neighborhood of the supportive housing being proposed to be built on for over 53 years. I've done some research on my own on supportive housing and found some interesting information. The Journal of Housing Economics published a study in March of 2017 titled "The Impact of Permanent Supportive Housing on Homeless Populations." The study showed that supportive housing does not help people exit from homelessness. In fact, it showed that supportive housing attracts more people from outside the homeless system or keeps them in the homelessness system, because they are drawn to the promise of a permanent and usually rent-free home. A recent economic analysis revealed that cities have to build 10 supporting beds to remove one homeless person from the street, since the vast majority of units go to people who would not have been permanently homeless. Even the removal of that one homeless individual from the streets dissipates over time as more people enter the homelessness system. In October of 2019, UCLA performed a study on the health conditions of unsheltered homeless. The study concluded that supportive housing doesn't work, because it ignores the fact that the major problems for the chronically homeless aren't just lack of a home. It found more than 75% of this population have a serious mental illness, 75% have a substance abuse problem, and a majority have both. These individuals also are reluctant to accept assistance when they are offered to them. At one point, it was believed that housing alone could help reduce drug use and mental health problems. Yet, two studies published in the Journal of Dual Diagnosis, Housing First for Adults with Problematic Substance Use and Alcohol and Drug Use Disorders Among Homeless Veterans, both showed that simply providing people supportive housing does not reduce drug use and often encourages it, which makes sense, because free unit provides unit provides people with more money to pursue their habits. Heritage.org published a randomized controlled trial out of Ottawa, and the results were that homeless put in supportive housing at higher rates of substance use, mental illness, and death than people simply left on the streets. The results are similar for mental illness. A documentary on PBS called "Right to Fail" showed that for many people with mental illness, a permanent apartment increased social isolation. More concerning, a survey from 2018 of all supportive housing studies from the National Academies of Science found that, quote, "There is no substantial published evidence as yet to demonstrate that supportive housing improves health outcomes." Thus, supportive housing on its own is not a effective or cost-efficient tactic for improving the lives of the chronically homeless, unquote. I live approximately 600 meters from this proposed site. There's already an existing halfway house four houses away from me. Now my neighborhood is expected to house supportive housing. I am concerned that this will deprive my community of an opportunity to attract other, more broadly beneficial land uses on, to the site. And more critically, I fear that supportive housing will have a negative impact on the neighborhood. I worry that it will increase crime, drain the neighborhood's services and infrastructure, bring people to the community whose behavior will make residents and visitors uncomfortable, and otherwise decrease the quality of life in our neighborhood. Currently, there are three parks within the vicinity of the proposed site, an abundance of trails that are regularly used, especially with children, all of which are ideal locations for illegal use, illicit drug use, and the discarding of drug paraphernalia. There are also multiple daycares within close proximity to the proposed site of the parks that use the parks and the trails. In closing, I believe that our community, what our, our community actually needs is more affordable housing for everyone, as well as more resources for a as well as more resources for addiction and mental health. These would be much more practical solutions in reducing the homelessness in North Vancouver. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Paula Newfeld. The next speaker I have is Sam Jones, followed by Huri Sherzad. Sam joins, Sam is joining us virtually, Sam, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
We are a young family with children that live in Carver Hall. We have owned our home for over twenty years. We were raised on the North Shore and have been residents of Northland all of our lives. I have attended all the public meetings regarding the proposed project at twelve hundred East Keith Road. I agree supportive housing is necessary. However, there are several issues with this site that have not yet been addressed. I do not feel that an RTB, RTA, rental tenancy agreement is appropriate for these residents. I am a landlord and require the following for any potential tenants living on my property: a criminal record check, a credit check, personal references and work references. Can you assure, can you assure us that you are not bringing criminals into our neighborhood? Who are these tenants? Who are these, who are the people that they associate with and who are they attracting? Where are they from if they have no known address and don't have ID? It sounds like there is their focus on education, working, training, recovering, classes, schedules, curfews, or working towards contributing to society. Why is there no structure at this facility? All of the other Vancouver Coastal Health Homes in our area have rules and guidelines for tenants. Why would this be a free-for-all for everyone to invite everyone inside, anyone to invite everyone inside? As we know, a safe injection site or a wet site, you are attracting drug users and drug dealers. Safety is our number one concern. Number two, the site proposed is not conducive with growth, well-being and recovery. The location is filled with triggers which do not support personal improvement. These residents would thrive in a peaceful, natural environment and deserve more than a side of a highway with traffic, pollution, triggers, sirens and honking. Why, why not consider locations closer to nature that have a focus on rehab and not allow drug use? The Lower Dollarton area and up near Caplini University area comes to mind as nice areas for personal growth. Keith Road and Mountain Highway is already the busiest intersection on the North Shore. It takes me over forty-five minutes to get home across the North Shore five days a week. Now we are adding sixty-five pedestrians to this intersection and daily visits from first responders. This will create serious problems that will affect everyone on the North Shore and could result in another fatality like the man from the Travelodge that got hit by a bus this summer. I would like to reiterate that first responders are called daily to the Travelodge. In fact, when the North Vancouver RCMP are overwhelmed, they often rely on the North, on the West Vancouver Police Department to help them out with these calls to the Travelodge. We know that the West Vancouver Police won't be coming to Keith Road location when the RCMP is overwhelmed. How will we handle these emergencies? Our neighborhood has just endured six years of construction to create the new interchange and we are not prepared for another two- to three-year project of construction followed up by more chaos. Please provide a full traffic assessment of this project before approval. Please provide a full emergency response of this project before approval. Finally, I'd like to point out that the only people supporting this project in these public meetings are, A, government employees, B, people who have been personally invited by MLAs or members of council, and C, non-residents of this area. In fact, most of the supporters don't even live on the North Shore. That is like me going to the City of Surrey council meeting and speaking for five minutes about the pros and cons of Surrey Police versus the RCMP. We have hundreds of residents that have signed a petition for this project for over fif, and over fifty community members that have already spoken out publicly opposing this project. Please listen to your community speaking out, listen to the community that have elected you to represent us, that we have trusted will make the right decisions for us and our families. Please listen to the community that lives here and pays taxes to the District of North Vancouver, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Sam Jones. The next speaker I have is Huri Sherzad, followed by Mina Ban Manyar. Joining us here in person, welcome, when you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Sure, thanks. Hello, everyone. Today, I would like to express my deep dislike about this proposal due to many conspicuous reasons, not only from my side, but on behalf of many neighbors who have not been able to show up today. Please stop rezoning this neighborhood. First of all, we all know the first priority of all of us is to keep the area safe and secure for everyone, including families and children who consist of the majority of residents here. How can it be justified to put the children's health mentally and physically at risk? There are many parks, trails and playgrounds in this area that practically would become useless because no one can let their kids encounter homeless people, the majority of whom are addicted and suffer from different diseases. Do they really seek to ruin families' lives here with permanent worries of parents about their children when they're out to school or play? Secondly, through this proposal, we will face the high crime rate in the area. Theft, drug dealing, shouting at midnight are what we are going to witness. Is it rational to destroy the nice ambience of our neighborhood with this fragile proposal? Thirdly, I'm talking to those few people who try to make others emotional by their tears. And interestingly, usually they hold some positions in related organizations which benefits from this proposal. Unfortunately, they don't care at all about what they are trying to do with simple and ordinary lives of others by this ineffective decision. This is definitely going to ruin the peace and tranquility of many safe and healthy people to just pretend they care about the minority part of society. That's not acceptable at all, and for sure, this is not an act of humanity. I don't say we shouldn't help homeless people, but why you choose a family-oriented area? Do you like this situation for your own kids as well? Certainly not. You put our kids at risk of addiction and other problematic issues because we all know that is the consequence. Moreover, what is obvious is your attempt to announce the few advocates' words of this proposal so bold, whereas the opponents of this proposal are too many and each of us are representative of many others. But you don't announce these huge opponent words. This is also completely clear in your reports which try to misguided readers. At last, I would like to say something about myself. I moved in this, to this area from Vancouver recently to start my family as this area is safe and I've heard about, about the good ambience here. But now I really made myself disappointed with this proposal by this idea and certainly I cannot raise my children among homeless people who just stroll around and abuse drugs. I am really sad and strongly ask for stopping this proposal. Let's do not sacrifice happy lives of many people just for the minority. This is not logical and there would be no rosy future for our neighborhood with this choice. Thanks a lot for your attention.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker I have, sorry. Oh, yeah, if you have written remarks that you would like shared with the whole council, I mean, you can obviously email them in ahead of the closure of the hearing, but you can also drop them in the black tray, we should just boilerplate that, that should just be in my speech notes. So the black tray that's just inside, just on the desk here, anything that goes in there will scan it and share it with the council. So if you have prepared remarks, you're welcome to drop them there. This point, we have Mina Bamanyar, followed by Lucy David. Welcome, when you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and all the neighbors, and thank you for giving me this time. I'm going to speak on opposition of this project. First of all, I have a more general question, but I'm wondering if there'll be anybody to answer.
This is a public hearing, which means we're here to hear the benefit of your comments, it's not a question and answer session.
Okay, okay, so what, this is my concern, that has anybody asked these people, the addicted and the homeless, that if they prefer to come here themselves or not? Because, I mean, they probably are more, are happier to live in an area, in a community which they are more similar to each other than coming here and feeling such a big difference with the other people that they are here. And of course, if you ask them, they're gonna say, oh, you want to go there, you want there, and they are gonna be very happy to be. But have anybody given them a choice that if would they like to live in a community which they are all more like each other, they have similar problems, and for the government or any responsible organization to help them in a centralized place, which happening in all countries, in most of the countries, but not here. Our homeless people, our addicted people, or at least they have found themselves a central place in Hastings. Now you want to take them out from there and spread it in all over the cities, why? Why are you doing this? They want to be together. I'm not against them, they need help, but you can help them when they are in a center place, not putting them in a different, different conditions and different communities. This is one point that I don't know if anybody asks their ideas or not, or the point of homelessness and addiction is such a big, big problem, and I know for government. I'm not going to go through all the problems of it and all that, but just distributing it everywhere, how can it solve anything? Of course they need house, of course they need somewhere to live, yeah? But who chose this place, why? Has anybody had any preferences why this place and not anywhere else? There are so many daycares here. I'm coming from a apartment building full of seniors. There are ninety percent of us in that place are seniors. And I mean, very old, old ones, not the fifty-five-year-old, much older. And imagine, you cannot go out anymore. I just browsed through the internet and I saw like more than twenty attacks to seniors just in the last few months. How do you think that you are gonna go out from the house anymore, when we cannot even walk fast? And who you're, you're bringing them here to what? To make this community really unsafe? I have a very bad experience myself. I had a shop about ten years ago, I was attacked with one of these, with a knife, and up to now haven't been recovered. It is not a story, I was in the magazines, I was, sorry, newspapers, I was on TV of it because I could cut the guy and I was considered as a local hero, whatever, whatever, but the effect is on me. With very slightest noise, I just jumped because I don't know what it has happened to my nervous system that I have become so sensitive. I know that you have probably your own reasons to do this, but please reconsider it. I don't think it's becoming very healthy to do that. There are so many young kids, I love, like to love, walk along this train. There are so many daycares, what are you gonna do with this? How can you prevent them? Nobody can prevent an addict to smoke and use drugs in their private place. They can do anything because they are so much in need, my dear, everybody knows this. They are gonna steal, they are gonna kill, they are gonna do anything to get their money and use the substance. If it was not that difficult, if it was so easy to control them, why haven't you been able to do it up to now? Why? And you're bringing them among all these seniors and babies and young families to do what? To do what? To increase your own problems? And who will be responsible if something happens to us? Who? Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker I have is Lucy David, followed by Jennifer Foster. So Lucy is a virtual participant, you should have a prompt that pops up on your screen that says, join the panel. We're gonna send that to you again, and if you accept that, then we'll be able to add you to the meeting. But if you don't accept that prompt, there we go. Okay? And take ten seconds for that to take place. Lucy, you are listed as being muted in the system, can you hear me? Lucy, you're listed as being muted in the system, can you unmute, can you hear me? Lucy must be having some technical difficulties, I'm gonna go to another speaker and then we'll immediately come back to Lucy as the next speaker. So the next speaker I have is Jennifer Foster. Welcome.
Thank you.
When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
That's good, thanks.
And as a reminder, can you speak into the microphone?
Absolutely. Sure.
Thank you so much.
Hello, Mayor and Council, my name is Jennifer Foster. I'm a resident in the district and I'm here to oppose this supportive housing rezoning and instead advocate for a better model for delivering housing for people who are homeless or at risk of it. I have been a social worker for twenty years and I have known several individuals who were homeless, one of whom I call a friend. Fifteen years ago, I worked with a neighbor in Kits to help house a man on our street who was homeless. He lives with a mental health condition and addiction. The only housing available was a downtown SRO. He took the room because it offered his dog a warmer place to sleep than the street, but he spent his waking hours outside to escape the chaos and danger that the building put him in. In fact, for several years, he became worse off as he got sucked back into the drug culture he had escaped on the street. After six years, he was given independent housing in a mixed-use social housing building, which is where he is today. He is doing well because he has community in the building. The neighbor's kids who love to pet and give treats to his dog bring him joy. Checking on his elderly neighbors gives him the feeling of responsibility and pride. And he has the example and neighborly companionship of other single individuals who are working and living healthy, normal lives. None of this would be the case if he had lived in a supportive housing building like the one proposed. While he may have some supports with life goals from staff and companionship among neighbors, I am sure that he would mainly be living outside again by day to avoid the temptation and chaos of drug consumption and that he would still be striving for normal living. Supportive housing, which congregates individuals for long-term in large numbers, is abnormal and I oppose it on that basis. Normalcy in housing requires a diversity of tenants. Both my experience and the scientific literature show that what individuals who need supportive housing both want and need is scattered-site housing with robust supports. This is what is meant by independent recovery-oriented housing and it's the current best practice for people who experience homelessness alongside mental illness and addiction. Independent housing means the allocation of a small number of suites in regular rental buildings and offering options to someone who is homeless about which they would want to live in. Giving people choices gives them dignity. The recovery aspect means an interdisciplinary team which is available twenty-four-seven to provide the care and help they need. I would like to go back to my friend. He has a daughter in the foster care system with whom he longs to have a relationship and he would not be able to reconnect with her in a building with a consumption site because children are not permitted to enter. Furthermore, single occupancy suites which are too small for more than a single bed enforce separation from children rather than fostering family reunification. Research shows that twenty-five percent of people who are homeless have children, many are in foster care. I think it's a human rights offense to house individuals in a circumstance in which they cannot reunite with their children. Most countries around the world and most other provinces don't seek to solve the issue of homelessness by congregating people with similar life circumstances. Portugal made their internationally renowned turnaround virtually eradicating homelessness because their solution was dedicated to community reintegration. Please consider for a moment, if you were homeless and in need of support, would you want to live in this building or would you want a building with mixed tenants? I hazard the answer is you would choose the latter. You ought to apply the same standards to all residents of North Vancouver as you do to yourself. Please do what is right and not what is politically expedient. The current provincial approach is being pushed across the province and I appreciate that there is political pressure on you to approve this rezoning. Communities around the province are experiencing that the current approach doesn't work for either the residents or community members and changes in council and legal activities around the approval process are due to lack of collaboration with communities and municipal councils. You have an opportunity to stand on the right side of history. Push back on B C housing to do better. Push back on B C housing to do better. Say no to this rezoning and force them to collaborate with you to develop a housing and treatment model which will move people away from suffering. And back with families and friends and into community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Jennifer Foster. The next speaker, I'm just gonna double back and check on Lucy David. I know you were trying to sort out some technical issues. Okay, Lucy David. If you are restarting your computer and want to join the meeting again, we will monitor and look for your name to pop up. But at this point, if there's a technical difficulty, I would encourage you to write an email and submit your comments perhaps in that way. But I will circle back and try to get you into the list if we see you pop up on the on the virtual participants again. The next speaker that I have is Tarana Razagi, followed by Alex Galloway. Welcome, when you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I prefer to start with some points I took during the last sessions through question and answer section. The first point to pin is the project provides, as I heard, the project provides twenty-four-hour security and cameras for their own residents only, but not for the public in the area. Therefore, they don't care about the issues their residents may provide for their neighborhood. And nobody takes the responsibility for any probable problems. Two, there is no criminal background check for their residents. It makes this project even more scary for the public around. The project, three, the project planners insist that this project will help these particular group of people integrate with the rest of the society to learn and practice this social life and behavior. This idea looks to be perfect on the surface. But question, what percentage of these addict and substance users have come back to normal life? And continue to live as a responsible citizens, trying not to be a burden on the shoulders of the society? But I tell you, the fact is, these substance users do not want to integrate with the society. They enjoy their own lifestyle more because they have chosen not to accept any social norm which obviously restricts them. And they accept no responsibilities in the society because it's easier for them to get services at no cost from those who always contribute by working hard and paying taxes. Once, I heard from one of those street sleepers in Maine and Hastings that it's such a funny life to go to work nine-to-five every day to pay your taxes, mortgages and credit cards. This is their viewpoint about what we call a normal life. Four, we heard that the R C N P is also involved in this project. If so, it shows this project can be involved with criminals. And it might and it must be a serious threat to the security and well-being of the neighborhood. But I have some notes here. This target group of permanent tenants are going to be substance users and mentally retarded fellow men who are not going to be cured. And as a result, they are homeless because of the lifestyle they have chosen to live. So it seems that the advocates of this project are trying to ignore and hide the proven serious problems these tenants will bring with them into the neighborhood. By focusing on and highlighting their being homeless, these advocates are hiding their main intentions behind the humanitarian postures and condemn the opposite side of being merciless or selfish or the like. We are against the project because we are worried about the future outcome of this project in this neighborhood. And I'm going to take the rest of my time by just sharing with you a personal, to make it more personalized about my own experiences of horrible experiences I had six years ago when I used to live in Toronto. I lived, I just worked as a security guard for my weekend job in a condo. And one of the residents of that condo just stopped me under, not on the way, immediately after I stepped into the bus when I was going to the college. He knew, he just knew me, recognized me immediately and he started to greet me. I greeted back very politely and started to talk to me over and over and over. And I tried the whole session, I tried the whole time, I was trying to be polite with him because I knew him as well. But he continued and then he started to tell me something. I cannot just repeat the words now because I get really concerned about that or just lose my control. But anyway, he started, he just started just threatening me. And he was carrying something, a very large black bag of something was oozing through that. He just pushed it toward my arms and just, you should take it, you should take it to my brother. You should take, you know my brother, you should take it to my brother. I will kill you if you don't that, if I will kill you if you don't do that. And you know, the bus was full of more than hundred people and nobody came to help me because they were afraid of just coming forward. He just hostage me and harassed me for more than forty-five minutes in the bus. And after that, when the bus came to the station, all people just took, just got off the bus. But he didn't let me go out. He just kept this like this and he just didn't let me go out. And finally, when the driver called the police, he just started threatening me. Okay, you call the police, you call the police, I know, I will kill you. Okay, I don't want to continue like this, you know, but you know, since then, I'm just, I was on medication. And just last year, I decided to leave Toronto to Vancouver and come to this area, North Vancouver. Because I believe that, I heard that this is a very peaceful place. And I thought that peace and tranquility will come back to me. But it seemed by just hearing about this project, it seems that this trauma will not leave me.
If you could draw to a close, that'd be appreciated.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker I have is Alex Galloway. The speaker after Alex Easton Smith has withdrawn and sent written remarks instead. So the next speaker after Alex Galloway will be Neil Wells. And again, for virtual participants, when that pop-up comes up asking you to join the panel, we do need you to accept it or we won't be able to connect you to the meeting. This time, Alex Galloway, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing when you're comfortable.
Hi, can you hear me?
Clearly.
I'm gonna offer a different perspective tonight. I support this project. I take the bus every day past here. I think it would be an efficient use of land and a wonderful place for people who are at risk of homelessness to live. They would have access to shops and services that are very close by. They would have good transit links. Sorry, this is my first time speaking at council. There is such a need for housing in Vancouver. And everywhere in Canada in general. This is an opportunity to put in sixty units at the bottom part of the market for people who are at risk of homeless. Often because they have very little money. And they just don't have any place to live because rent is so expensive. This would offer some real support for them. And they could get their lives back together. They might even work in some of the businesses that are in the area. Because retail is an easy, is an easy sector to get into if you have very few qualifications. The council has an opportunity to provide housing for people that really need it. I think this would be a wonderful project and add some variety to the housing stock in the district. Thank you very much for your time.
Very much for your comments, Alex Galloway. The next speaker I have is Neil Wells, joining us virtually. Have we been able to connect with Neil Wells? And just double check. Looks like you're connecting now. Just give that about ten seconds though.
Hi, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Fantastic, thanks so much. So good evening. I am going to join the previous speaker in speaking in favor of this supporting housing project. My name's Neil Wells. I'm here as a resident of the Northland District. And while I no longer work for the city of Vancouver, in my previous position there, I was the communications manager supporting land use planning and development applications from twenty eighteen to the end of twenty twenty-two. So I had the opportunity to attend and watch many, many public hearings for new housing developments, whether they were market rental or supportive. And I have to be honest with you, over the years, there was one universal truth that emerged time and time again through these meetings. If there was a proposed project that was over four stories or included social housing, there was always a vocal minority that had the time to attend those public hearings and who generally were not representative of the wider population in their opinions. So it's refreshing to be on this side of the desk, so to speak, as someone who's participating in a public hearing. But you know, it is disheartening and even though it's not necessarily surprising to hear the same refrain here over and over that you've heard for the past four days, has happened in any community where a relatively small but vocal group of people are trying to stop important social housing from being built. It doesn't fit the character of the community. It will increase crime. It will be unsafe for our children. There will be any parking. Or I'm in favor of this type of project, just not this particular project in this particular location. But like honestly, I can understand where people are coming from. I get it. Change can feel pretty scary. It's uncomfortable to think that the community we all moved to, two, five, ten, fifteen, thirty years ago, is gonna change. And probably for the worse, especially if you have young kids. And I mean, like, how can it not change for the worse? We're talking about homeless people moving into our neighborhood, right? Here's the thing, though. They're not moving in. They already live here. We're talking about our neighbors, our family members, and as a previous, previous speaker noted, our friends. That's who needs this housing. The people in need, whether they're indigenous, non-indigenous, unhoused or at risk of being homeless. They already live in our community and they live all around us. So this development is gonna give sixty-five people at a time a chance for a better life. This is an opportunity for them to have stability. All those heavy drug users people are talking about, that's five units. And that's really what we're here to talk about, Mayor and councillors. Whether or not you're gonna help create the ability for people in our community who are struggling to have stable housing and a chance for a life again in North Vancouver that isn't just on the margins. These sixty-five units are gonna also go quite a long way to meeting the seventy-eight units of supportive housing mandated by the B C government for the Northland District. So you've also got B C housing on board to help fund the construction. How many other sites that the district owns are going to cover off over eighty percent of the social housing mandate? Projects like this with senior government support and funding don't come along every day. And I urge you to look past the minority of voices you've heard in opposition here tonight. And I, last thing I'll say is, I'm not gonna say, don't be like Polka. There's a lot to like in Polka. But we just saw how a small percentage of the population almost cost that city an important community asset. Thanks very much for your time tonight.
I thank you for your comments, Neil Wells. Just before I continue on with the speakers list, I noticed we're getting past eight o'clock. It's been a long day for some. See, you've got kids with you here. Are you on the speakers list? Would you like to move up?
I will, I will be sitting here.
Okay, if you're okay with that, that's fine. Just wanted to check, I've had four kids, I know what it's like. So just give that up. I don't know if there's any other kids in the room here, so, okay. All right, I'm gonna continue on with the list as is then, at this point. So the next speaker is Matt Hunter, followed by Saru, Saru, Sarah Frozey. Welcome, when you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
My name is Matt Hunter and my partner and I live about a hundred meters from the proposed build site. First of all, we were disappointed that we learned of the project through word of mouth rather than directly from the district of North Vancouver. And we only learned about it about four days ago. No flyers or mail were delivered to our house notifying us of it, of the project. And the district needs to do, make a greater effort to notify residents in the area. My partner and I both have experienced working with those suffering from drug addiction, homelessness, mental illness, and at times all three. I've personally spent six years working in Vancouver's downtown east side. We are well-versed in the needs of those who may benefit from supportive housing and do not take those needs lightly. With that said, we strongly oppose the proposed supportive housing project. We do not, we do not support allowing drug users to continue to use drugs in the housing complex as it will be detrimental to others living in the housing complex and the community. Those suffering from addiction are not of sound mind and their sole focus between highs is to secure drugs for the next high, most often by any means necessary, including stealing, breaking into cars, breaking into houses, working in the sex trade and other legal and dangerous means. Crime in our neighborhood will increase if this proposal goes ahead. There's also a lot of violence that is directly related to illicit drug trade, which I personally witnessed many, many times. Violence in our neighborhood will increase if the proposal goes ahead. Someone who is addicted to drugs and suffering from homelessness often has already lost everything, their home, their family, their friends, their partner. But they still continue to use drugs. Vancouver Coastal Health, B C Housing and the District of North Vancouver are all extremely naive to think they can provide a home, food, drug paraphernalia, and maybe even drugs to those suffering from addiction and think that they'll be able to rehabilitate them. How do we expect those suffering from addiction who generally struggle with impulse control to stop using when they're surrounded by temptation? The province and other organizations have also created a strong sense of community among those suffering from drug addiction. By housing drug addicted people in the same buildings or in the same area, such as the downtown east side. Addicted continue to use drugs and commit crimes to support their habits because that behavior is normalized in that environment. One just needs to visit the downtown east side to see this. The province has approached of trying to fight the opioid crisis by reducing the stigma has failed. This year in twenty twenty-three, we'll have the highest number of overdose deaths since the opioid crisis started. Allowing, supporting and enabling people to continue to use drugs is not compassion, it's delaying the inevitable, which is death. We need to promote abstinence and have mandated treatment for those suffering from addiction with the goal of rehabilitating them into society. We need to set strong boundaries and let them know that they are accountable for their actions and that we, as a society, expect and want better of them. Allowing drug use in this proposed supportive housing complex will inevitably bring the violence that's associated with the illicit drug trade to the neighborhood. Cars and houses will get broken into and there will be drug paraphernalia littered in the parks and public spaces. For these reasons, we strongly oppose the supportive housing development based on the current proposal, which will support and further drug addiction. In a short time, we've known about the project. We've discussed it with many of our neighbors, many of whom were unaware of the project. Everyone we spoke with signed up petition opposing the project and we believe that we could obtain many more signatures if given the time. This also demonstrates the district has done a poor job of communicating this project to the residents around the proposed build site. If the proposed project was truly supportive and had zero tolerance for drug use, we would be open to considering the potential benefits to the community. However, as the proposal currently stands, we see no benefit to the community. Thank you.
Very much for your comments, Matt Hunter. Next speaker I have is Saru Sarfrazie.
Hello.
Joining us virtually. Yes, I can, clearly, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you for having me. Tonight, I prefer to talk instead of sending an email because I would love to hear the opinion of people who are in favor of this project and my following suggestion. I'm against supporting housing in my neighborhood. But still, I believe that it is important to prioritize the happiness and well-being of those who are homeless. To find a solution that can satisfy both sides, I mean, the people who are opposing and the people who are in favor. I suggest exploring alternative options that would benefit everyone involved. To bridge the divide between supporters and opponents of the project, I suggest that those in favor take the lead in welcoming at least one homeless person in their homes. This proposal aligns with their belief that homeless individuals will not negatively impact the neighborhood. This proposal would achieve several goals. One, providing homes for the homeless. Second, not they, not, not only they have home, but they can have a family. Three, reducing the concentration of homeless individuals in one area and lowering, lowering crime rates. Three, reducing the concentration of homeless individuals in one area and lowering crime rates. Four, satisfying who are concerned about homelessness. Five, addressing the concerns of those who oppose the construction of a supportive building in their neighborhood. Five, pleasing environmentalists by avoiding further cutting trees. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments, Saru Sarfrazie. The next speaker I have is Anjali Tarant. Welcome. And the next speaker is Serge Bodan after that. Welcome when you're comfortable. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Can you hear me okay?
Clearly.
Okay. Hello, my name is Anjali Taran and I'm speaking today as someone who was born and raised in the neighborhood of the proposed site and is fortunate to continue to be a homeowner in the area. I've also worked as a frontline registered nurse in this community or as some might say a first responder for the past six years. And I am in favor of the proposal and while I'm speaking only from my own personal and professional experience, nobody asked me to be here or paid me to be here. The housing and cost of living crisis are impacting every community in Canada and the city. And the District of North Vancouver is no exception. Communities have been put in the unfortunate position of needing to address larger systemic failures. This is not ideal, but it's the situation that we are in. The poverty deteriorating mental health and homelessness on the North Shore go largely unseen by the community. But I know firsthand there's a desperate need for support. While some valid concerns have been raised about the project, it seems many arguments seem to conflate poverty with a threat to public safety when those fears and beliefs who are perpetuated by those with other agendas are rooted in stigma, stereotypes, and discrimination against those who live in poverty and may also have mental illness and addiction. I've heard a lot of such stereotypes tonight and I'm incredibly disappointed. I've lived across the street from the North Shore Shelter on West Second. The, I always felt safe there personally, even though I had my own reservations at times about the people who seemed to hang around that area. I was very surprised and pleased to get to know the other people living in that area who resided at that shelter. Every day they would see me and my dog, who they referred to as Marshmallow. And I, we would walk by and they would always say hello to me and offered me a respect that perhaps I never earned, but that they afforded to me anyway. A lot of children were in that area and I never saw any issues. The apartment that I lived in also grew in value exponentially from the time that we owned it. And that shelter was there, it existed before the apartments existed in that area. Petty crime has always happened in North Vancouver. Theft is often a product of desperation, which will have worsened from the cost of living crisis we're in. Supportive housing does not invite crime or criminals into the community. They will occur regardless. Have you ever interacted with those who are homeless on the North Shore? Because I have seen them on their worst days in hospital and most of them have been much kinder to me as their nurse than many of the wealthy residents in the area. There are already halfway houses in the neighborhood and yet residents don't seem to consider their children unsafe now. This hearing is about zoning and I don't believe in overdose prevention site as what is being proposed. No solution will be perfect, but I appreciate that the district is finally trying to create equitable services for its community members. I am calling you all to open your hearts and minds to this project and the people that it could help. Everyone in our community deserves a chance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments, Anjali Tarant. The next speaker I have is Serge Bodan, followed by Marie Costello. Serge joining us virtually. Serge, yeah, no, that's, that's no problem. That will put you at about one hundred and thirty-eight on the list, which is going to come up pretty quick. The next speaker I have is Marie Costello, followed by Linda Lyne. Marie Costello here. A virtual participant, okay?
Hi, yeah, I'm here.
I can hear you, but it's quite faint. If I can just have you speak directly into your microphone, that'd be appreciated. But when you're ready, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, can you hear me? Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I live in the Sealand area on Charlotte Road. I've got two kids and I've lived in Vancouver for the last eight years and recently became a new Canadian. I absolutely support low cost and supportive housing, but the details of twelve hundred East Keith are poorly considered and outright not fit for purpose. I'd like to outline some of the details that I believe would make it more successful for both residents of the development and also the surrounding area. Is my, is the volume okay?
Yes.
Okay. Every neighborhood should look after its poor and unwell residents. And if we don't look after our most vulnerable, then what kind of people are we? My husband and I are both engineers and we can still only manage to live in an apartment in a cheap area of North Vancouver. And I put cheap in inverted commas, by the way. I can only imagine how hard it is for people less advantaged than us. We've heard some really compelling success stories during the public hearings. And but also some very legitimate concerns about how this project isn't being set up for success. And I believe the best way forward isn't to scrap the plans, but just to improve them. I wanted to speak this evening to address some of the speakers who said that anyone against development is heartless and racist and doesn't have compassion, is extremely reductive, and it shows that you're unable to consider all the aspects of the project and their impacts. The development is incredibly necessary and it's likely to negatively impact the local neighborhood. Both statements can be true. Having conducted desk studies in the past, I believe that the positioning of the development next to a busy intersection and daycare are incredibly inappropriate. The reasoning has been explained by others before me, but as a local, I would be happy for the development to be positioned somewhere else close to me. Housing people with addiction and mental health issues proximal to a busy intersection and a daycare doesn't seem like it should get past the first pass of a basic risk assessment. I believe this development was targeted at families, elderly, or women who need low cost housing. It would be more appropriate, given that the new Sealand area itself was targeted at young families. The fact that the development will be for people with additional needs such as addiction and mental health and that they will be able to use drugs is concerning, given the proximity to the new family-friendly infrastructure. Also, I imagine it would be incredibly hard to get clean when people are using drugs in the rooms around you. The lack of criminal record checks is my greatest concern for the target resident group. I'd like to corroborate one of the speakers from last week, and I think her name was Irene. And I was at Britman Park two Sundays ago and happened to cross some District of North Vancouver representatives and a group of local people, including three or four first responders. The first responders voiced their concerns about the lack of engagement and poor planning that the twelve hundred East Keith Road development appears to have. But they have firsthand experience of similar housing developments across North Vancouver, having to provide assistance at residences where the staffing and care provisions are not sufficient for the needs of the residents. The first responders explicitly outlined how this development was poorly designed. Sorry, and would not be sufficient, oh, maybe, sorry. Sorry, I've just lost myself. Was poorly designed and would not be sufficient for the needs of the residents. The District of North Vancouver employees were incredibly dismissive and evasive. It was disappointing to witness. They gave no meaningful answers to any of the concerns. In patronizing tones, they talked at length but actually said nothing at all. It generally feels like when local people voice their concerns, it's like screaming into the wind. It's incredibly concerning that the development hasn't engaged R C M P or first responders to deal with residents who deal with residents when the systems and best intentions fail. It's concerning that there doesn't seem to be a consideration to lessons learned from nearby developments who have similar setups. It doesn't feel like the twelve hundred East Keith Road suits the needs of the proposed residents and also of the existing residents of Sealand. I hope that the details such as location, involvement of, involvement of emergency services in planning and the target residence can be reevaluated into something more appropriate for the needs of both sets of residents. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for your comments, Marie Costello. The next speaker I have, I believe is joining us virtually, is Linda Lyne, followed by Peter Vanis. Linda Lyne, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Clearly welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, this is my probably third time. I don't want to repeat what I've said and a lot of other people have said. So this time I'm gonna address.
So just, just to be clear about that, oh, sorry, you're not going to repeat what was said, correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I wanted to just mention again that placing sixty-five people who are suffering together and hoping that they will get better just sounds like it's done in Vancouver already and had, has failed. And over the years, it has only gotten worse. Dr. Julian Summers, who is someone who is a clinical psychologist and also a professor who has proven pathways for wellness from addiction and mental health, mental illness and homelessness was not consulted. On his website, results have shown that B C addiction crisis spirals further out of control. And this is where I mentioned, I feel like things have gotten worse over the years. In addition, public safety is a huge concern. My best friend's uncle owns a little tiny luggage shop in Chinatown for over thirty years. Recently, in September, someone came into his shop and beaten him up in the, like, just start hitting him in the head for no reason. And he suffered from, you know, in his brain, he was bleeding. And it's really disheartening for me to see that public safety has gone so bad in that area. And what I feel is that there's also a lot of small businesses in this neighborhood. And, you know, like, people have to go to work and also feel safe. But sometimes with mental health, I understand, and under the influence, they, they have no control. But also not having the support to get off the drugs is, was a concern for me. And I'm just wondering, when it comes to like paramedics and ambulance, how long would it take to get to the location? And also, will that take away from your day-to-day calls? The same week that my father-in-law, who had fallen, it took me over three hours to get paramedics to us to take him to the hospital. I, he's a pretty tall man. I, me and my husband couldn't take him to the hospital because we could have hurt him. So we had no choice but to leave him very uncomfortable in the position that he was in, whereas like someone who was overdosing, they, they would get paramedics in there in under five minutes. So when I was talking, the paramedics was like, we're sorry it took so long. We have to attend to first, you know, first calls, which are all the overdoses. I feel like there is also a better solution to this, where Graham Alexander proposed having a hundred and eight units, which is more than the sixty-five, offering a clean site. And at least that would give opportunity for the ones who want to get off the drugs a chance. Because then they don't go to those red zones, right? The ones that want to do drugs, they can go to those red zones. And then, you know, workers and doctors can come and find them at this location. And I also think that, you know, to explore those avenues instead of putting this and no support behind it. And even Jennifer Foster mentioned how living in a mixed building was beneficial. Dr. Summers mentioned that, having scattered versus like congregated living is, is what is needed. So I mentioned in the past where our, our tenants have said that drugs was in their face during COVID and it's just tempting you like candy, so it's hard to get off the drugs. That, that same tenant, because he was on drugs and he was tempted, he ended up giving up his room. And in the end, you know, I found a young girl, First Nation, dead in his room because he had to give up his room for, to pay the debt of owing drug money to this guy. And he brought in this, the drug dealer brought in this girl and let her overdose and die in the room. I guess I'm kind of over my time. So I just wanted you to hear that from first experience.
Thank you very much for your comments, Linda Lyne. The next speaker I have is Peter Vanis, followed by Kevin Hollitt. Peter, joining us here. Don't see a name online that reflects that. Peter, if you are online virtually, if you could raise your virtual hand or if you're the call-in on there, if you could press star nine, that will raise the virtual hand in our system. There is a call-in. But at this point, I'm going to say that they're not here and we'll cycle back to them. The next speaker I have is Kevin Hollitt, followed by Farzad Arivi. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you very much. Hello, council. My name is Kevin Hollitt and I'm a resident of the District of North Vancouver. I'm here to express my support of this proposal. The number of people experiencing homelessness on the North Shore increased by thirty-nine percent between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-three. The realities of living on the street are awful. Sleeping outside in the rain and cold, losing your possessions through constant displacement, no connections to community or healthcare. It's lonely, it's punishing, it's unforgiving. Unfortunately, those many hundreds of people who are members of our community are not in a position to come here and speak on their own behalf because of the harsh realities of their existence. Communities like ours have been put into the unenviable and unfair position of addressing the larger systemic failures that have led to this dramatic and deeply troubling increase in homelessness and people who are vulnerable to homelessness. Growing in economic inequity, unaffordable housing, and an unregulated toxic drug crisis killing seven British Colombians every day. These are not issues that municipalities alone can solve. These are not issues that can be solved by a single project. However, this does not absolve us of the responsibility to protect and care for our neighbors. Increasing homelessness is not going away and cannot, as some have suggested, be shuffled over to another community to deal with. We cannot wish it away. I'm grateful to the members of this council and district staff who have identified a response to this issue. Supportive housing like that proposed on Keith Road not only provides people with protection from the elements, it also connects people to lifesaving services, keeps them healthy, and allows them to thrive and succeed. If calling upon one's basic humanity is not convincing enough to support this proposal, we should look to what evidence tells us is most effective. Years of research has proven that the downstream costs of homelessness are much higher than the upfront costs of housing people. Furthermore, evaluations of supportive housing in urban centers around the world have shown that it does not have a negative impact on property values. In fact, investing these, investing in these services creates a healthier, wealthier, and safer community for all of us. Many of the arguments I've read and heard against this proposal conflate public safety with poverty and related addiction or express a misunderstanding of addiction and the dangers of abstinence-only approaches. What is truly behind these objections in my mind is fear, which is based on stigma and discrimination against poor people. I can appreciate that we don't want our children to pick up used syringes in our parks or on our streets. But used syringes are not the greatest safety risk our children face in this community. For example, we can simply look at data that shows a lack of pedestrian protections is a far greater safety concern in the District of North Vancouver than discarded syringes. And I look around and I wonder, where is the organized campaign to build safer streets? Furthermore, the problem of discarded syringes can be easily and affordably solved through the provision of Sharps containers and hiring low-income people to pick up needles. The solutions are there. Again, it is obvious to me that objections to the Keith Road project are based not on fact, but on stigma and discrimination. Poor people are not dangerous simply because they are poor. Their existence is not a threat. I urge you to respond to the many challenges our community faces, not with fear or by saying this one thing is not perfect or not enough, but through compassion and by following what evidence has told us is the most effective response, prioritizing the wellness of everyone, not just certain people. Thank you. Prioritizing the wellness of everyone, not just certain people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Kevin Holland. Our next speaker is Farzad Garabi. Mr. Garabi, you have five minutes to address this hearing.
Hello, everyone. My name is Farzad and I live in uh this neighbor, uh neighborhood. Um, uh, so I'm gonna be uh clear. I disagree with this proposal hundred percent. And I'm asking the mayor and councillors to stop uh rezoning this area. And I live this, in this neighborhood and I feel this is a great place to live because there are some parks, trails, and so many facilities around and I can enjoy. But uh, and this is something that the uh city and the mayor and uh, you know, the citizens should be proud of, of having a great place in the city. Uh, but by approving this proposal, you will destroy whatever you have built here. And in the near future, you will see that there will be no security, no safety, no business in this area later on. Um, another thing that uh I want to mention is that I'm not against uh, you know, helping homeless guys. They are human. We have to support them, okay? But, you know, I, I believe I myself have done my part a lot. We are all paying tax. We are all supporting, you know, these communities in different ways. And, you know, I, 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 I disagree with the spending my money. You know, the, the, the amount of money that you are going to spend for this project is mine. It's, it's our money out, you know? And I hundred percent disagree. Spending my money for this proposal. And my message to the advocates of this proposal is, you know, if you want to help homeless guy build a place for them in your own backyard, not in mine. I don't feel safe if you're going to build this place for these guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, uh Farzad Garibi. And the next speaker I have is Olivia Lutes, followed by Hart Gilbert. Don't see a name that reflects that. Uh, Olivia Lutes, if you are joining us virtually, if you could raise your virtual hand. And we'll try to incorporate you into the list. Okay, so we're gonna mark that as. Not here. Next speaker I have is Hart Gilbert, followed by Sean Vahid. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Good evening, council. Thank you for letting me speak. I was raised in West Lynn. I own a house on Arborland Drive. Um, there are several halfway homes and group homes on Arborland already. And uh, there's a lot going on, on Arborland. Um, we use the trails constantly between our, behind our house. Um, excuse me, walking and mountain biking. And my wife, every morning, rain or shine, is down there at six o'clock in the morning, walking for an hour. There is no homeless people in that area as of now. Um, uh, I'm just worried in the future um that if you uh build it, they will come. Uh, I work for a large construction company in Abbotsford. They built a supportive housing down the road. We now have a monthly bill of nine thousand dollars for top-of-the-line security because we were overrun with uh break-ins, vandalism. Um, and it happened as soon as the uh supportive housing was opened. The other point that I want to make is when these people get kicked out of the supportive housing, where do they go? Um, it's, they, they, they're gonna go into the canyon. They're gonna go into the woods and set up camps there and um wait till they're allowed back in. Um, I oppose this project. Um, my son, my wife, it's a beautiful neighborhood. We love the canyon, we love West Lynn, but this thing is gonna be a bomb when it goes off. Um, it's, it's too many people, too large, and uh it's a beautiful area. I just feel it's gonna be uh ruined. Um, there's other areas that we could look at, but um I just feel this is gonna be a bomb when it is finally open. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Hart Gilbert. Uh, I do see now that we have a virtual participant with the name Liv. That's probably Olivia Lutes. So, uh, Liv, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, that's me.
I can hear you clearly. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you for having me. And I just wanted um, just do a quick point here. Um, so yeah, daycare, the, the daycares have been mentioned a few times tonight, and so I just wanted to focus on that. Um, there is a daycare, you know, less than five hundred meters across the street from this proposed uh location of the facility. And um, my, you know, I'm curious to know what sort of risk medications have been considered to remove or reduce the risk to the children um in, in that facility, in that daycare. And um, and, and, you know, if there's one person in this facility that poses a threat to those children, then that is one too many. Um, and, and of course, there's risk everywhere, but uh, but this one is well within your control. So um, I, I'd like to see this facility in a, a different location. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments, Liv Lutes. Uh, the next speaker I have is virtual participant Sean Vahid. Can we move? Uh, oh, sorry, Sean is listed twice. Oh, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Uh, clearly, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing. The next speaker after you will be Hazen Colbert, joining us virtually as well. Uh, but go ahead, please.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I strongly oppose this catastrophic uh project in our neighborhood. Supportive housing for drug abusers and mentally ill males can lead to an influx of individuals struggling with addiction residing in our neighborhood. These individuals, along with their friends, may resort to using secluded areas such as neighboring woods as a haven for illicit activities. This increased presence can cause danger amongst families and children, posing potential safety risks with uh, within our community. The direct consequence of drug abusers finding solace in our neighborhood is a heightened risk uh to the safety and well-being of families and children. Families residing near the supportive housing facility may face increased exposure to potentially dangerous situations, including drug-related activities, theft, and other criminal dangerous behaviors. This com- uh compromised safety could significantly impact the peaceful environment that families count on for their daily lives. The presence of drug abusers in our neighborhood, often struggling with various substance abuse, abuse issues, may contribute to environmental concerns. The potential for discarded drug, prefermalia, waste, and drug-related litter can pose serious health risks and cause wildfire, uh which would destroy neighboring houses and may end in loss of life. Supportive housing programs uh, when located within a neighborhood, can significantly impact property values. Potentially buyers who seek a secure environment for their families might be deterred by the proximity of a facility that caters to drug abusive, abusers and mentally ill grown men. With decreased demand, property values may decline, causing financial strain on homeowners and investors within our community. Another important point is that the company I work with has lost a highly skilled and valuable technicians and other workers who do not have their parents and other close family members and friends in the District of North Vancouver, but due to housing unaffordability, had to grow through the pain of saying goodbye to them and move far away. We were told that the opposing group have a sense of entitlement. We need to point out that the sense of entitlement belongs to the families of tho- of these men who made the wrong choices of using illicit drugs, but their families do not want to open their own doors and provide a loving environment for them. Then, these families want us, the hard-working taxpayers who went through this so much hardship, to learn useful skills and borrowed student loans and worked ourselves uh close to death to pay the, for the high mortgage with these high interest rates, property taxes, income taxes, et cetera, to carry the burden of their own children they refuse to take care of. We should not be held responsible to, to carry their burden. We all know about the traffic nightmare that already exists. And this is another reason for we are opposed to the project. But if all was well, and you had to build some kind of housing, why not housing for the senior citizens who worked hard uh all their lives and paid so much taxes or and, who are in risk of homelessness? Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comments, Sean Vahid. So we reached the end of the initial signups, and so I'm just gonna um uh, I do have a number of virtual hands that have been raised and I've noted them. Uh, but I'm just gonna circle back to the people that had signed up, but were not here at the time that we called on them, just to see if they've joined the meeting. Uh, is Ally Hummel here? I don't see a name that reflects that. Uh, and if you raise your virtual hand and your name matches it, I'll, I'll put you in. I don't see a name that reflects that. The next speaker is Mo Katem. Again, I don't see a virtual hand that represents that. Uh, Lucy David. Can we sort that out? Left the meeting, okay? Uh, then uh, the next one that was a, a not here was um Peter Thanis. Okay, uh, I also, I had a virtual hand raised by Hazen Colbert, but I see that he's no longer attached to the meeting. So if he rejoins again, we'll add him back to the list. But at this point, uh, I'm gonna mark him as withdrawn. Uh, we have a speaker from earlier, uh Serge Bodan here, uh, that you asked to be put to the bottom. This is the bottom of that list before I go on to new speakers. So if you'd like to, welcome, come on up. And then after uh Serge Bodan will be virtual speaker Allison. And, and just a reminder to the virtual participants, um, you're gonna get a pop-up on your screen that asks you to become a panelist. You need to accept that or I won't be able to uh come to you in the meeting. So when that pops up, please accept that. Uh, welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the year.
Good evening. This is my first ever experience of public uh speaking. And um, I'll try to be as clear as possible. I'm also not a native speaker, so please forgive me my choppy English at times. Uh, my name is Serge. I was born in ninety-eighty-one uh in Kryryv, Ukraine. It's the central part of Ukraine, uh highly industrialized and uh highly depressive region. Uh, I was, I grew up through the most uh terrible years of uses hard dissolution. And uh, because of those hard times, people uh, you know, tried to escape their reality by using lots of drugs. So I have a firsthand experience what is to live in a drug neighborhood. Last time I visited my city in uh twenty-eleven and uh, we had a nine-story building and twenty-six guys like me uh born in pretty much the same time. Uh, and by the twenty-eleven, out of twenty-six, just fourteen remained alive. The rest were deceased by hard drug use and alcoholism and whatever. Also, uh, I can speak of my mom's experience. Uh, she, she was a doctor. She's retired now, but uh, she was young and full of hope of fixing people. And she became a oncologist. So oncologists, I don't know if we have some kind of same profession here, but it's the doctor who tries to fix uh those people who abuse substances. And because we had no one to stay with me as a kid, she had to take me with her on her night shifts to this dispenser where all the local alcoholics, mentally issued people and drug users been contained. So I saw why she quit this in less than five years because it's pretty much hopeless. Because uh opioid drug users, they develop uh what called personality disintegration. It's when they lose all the values uh like uh, and uh develop personality defects, uh, especially when they are in a withdrawn state. Uh, they become aggressive. Suddenly, they can attack people and um go through all means of getting those drugs. I think I just one second. So okay, uh, first, I'd like to make it clear that I can uh draw a very clear line between the supportive housing for the young families, uh, single moms and people struggling with job loss or some kind of uh social hardships they're going through. Uh, those people, they do really need a support. Uh, but I strongly oppose uh of mixing those people with drug users and uh, you know, people with mental issues. You can't mix those people together because uh, like people in misery, uh, they will like cross-pollinate each other with their problems. So uh, as far as I can see, a lot of experience of the same uh supportive housing which been uh introduced to different communities, uh, like all of them failed. And uh it turned the neighborhoods into pretty much dumpsters. You can see downtown Vancouver part of Hastings. It, it, it never worked. Uh, so I will strongly support this project as long as uh, we're gonna know that there will be no drug use uh, and there will be no such people living there and endangering our community. That's pretty much all I wanna say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh Serge Bodan, for your comments. Uh, the next speaker is going to be virtual participant Allison and then uh Peter Thanis. So who is speaker number one thirty has now joined the meeting virtually, and so we'll go Allison and then Peter Thanis. So uh, Allison, can you hear me?
Hello?
Yes?
Hi, this is actually Lucas Christensen. I'm using Allison's iPad at the moment.
Fair enough. Uh, I'll write Lucas. There you go. And uh, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that um, we are living approximately five hundred meters from the proposed build site. And we strongly oppose the proposal. Um, we have a, we're, we're a young family living in the area. And uh, we just have concerns about uh, safety generally. Um, our two-year-old son goes to the daycare just across the street from where this site is proposed. And uh, yeah, we're, you know, we'll often take our stroller down the street and walk across that area directly in front of where this is possibly going to be built. And um, yeah, we're just very, very uh concerned about it. Um, we, we don't have any negative feelings towards having housing. I mean, I think it's important to have that, but um, we are very concerned about this proposal, about, you know, having to do with this direct spot. It seems like it's not a good idea. So I'll keep it short and sweet. Uh, we, we oppose and thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you for your comments, Lucas. Okay, uh, the next speaker I have Okay, the next speaker I have is Peter Thanis, also joining us virtually. Peter, can you hear me? Peter, it says on my side of the system here that you are muted. Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yes, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, I hope you can see me, sorry about that, okay? I've already emailed in my, kind of my general thoughts on everything, right? So I'm just going to try to go through this as quickly as possible. I know this night's running long for everyone. I'm obviously opposed to the project. I'm a father of four. We live nearby, two as well. I don't think the location mixes well with the family environment. You know, it consists of two Montessori schools, as you know. The Winter Club, which will be, in my opinion, a prime target of crime. And Bridgman Park, which is a nice park for families and children, which, in my opinion, all of these areas will become no-go zones, of course, right? I think it's not a very smart idea to put this project here, because I think it's going to frustrate future development in the neighborhood. I don't think the adjacent lands will benefit from this project being put there. I think that the District of North Vancouver really needs to think about this hard from the perspective of future tax revenues from future developments in the neighborhood, in that area there. You know, something like this will disincentivize developers from coming in and building master plan communities. And, you know, I think the entire area, because you have Salin Village, you have Park Tilford, you have the new Fibs Exchange, right? I mean, all of these areas have the potential of becoming a world-class master plan community, right? And I think this decision puts that, that kind of vision for that area of the District of North Vancouver in peril, okay? And I think it's something you should seriously consider, okay? I mean, I mean, I think we're literally talking about billions of dollars in development. We're talking about, you know, a lot of jobs that could potentially be lost, jobs that, you know, support families on the North Shore, farmers, electricians, these types of people. I don't think this is an industry that we need to be pushing on the North Shore. I think the homelessness industry is an industry that, with all due respect, doesn't have merit. Because unfortunately, the crime and everything else that's associated with it, you know, becomes the sole expense of law-abiding, taxpaying citizens. And I say to the sole expense of, you know, taxpaying, law-abiding citizens, because our judicial system doesn't punish the crimes that come along with this type of housing, okay? I think those are things that we need to look at, I think.
Oh. It appears as though Peter's connection has stopped at the meeting. Where do we get to? Two or three minutes left? We'll check and see if Peter reconnects to the meeting. And, and of course, we would want to hear the remainder of their comments. Let's try to get, we normally take a nine o'clock break. I'd like to get maybe two more speakers in before we take a nine o'clock stretch. So the next speaker I have is virtual participant Murad Azimi. Murad Azimi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, welcome.
Perfect, thank you for the opportunity.
Welcome, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Perfect, thank you. I'm a local resident leaving a few blocks away from the proposed site. I'm here with deep concern about the proposed development of a homeless shelter in District of North Vancouver. While addressing the homelessness is undoubtedly a critical issue, the proposed location raises significant apprehensions and prompts me to oppose to this initiative. First and foremost, it's crucial to acknowledge the issue of homeless people. Their needs and their necessity for shelters is undeniable. However, the chosen sites' proximity to the residential areas and school raises valid concerns about safety of the community and their well-being. Placing a shelter in this location could potentially jeopardize the safety and tranquility of neighborhood, causing distress among the residents and possibly affecting property values. Furthermore, a sudden influx of shelter in this area may lead to unintended consequences. There is a genuine fear of increased crime rates, substance abuse problems, and a negative impact on the local businesses, potentially deterring visitors and customers. I strongly advocate for a more comprehensive approach to tackle homelessness, one that includes collaboration with the community to find alternative locations that are more suitable and less likely to disrupt the existing harmony. We must prioritize the well-being and safety of both the homeless population and the local residents. While acknowledging the urgency of addressing homelessness, the proposed site for the shelter in North Vancouver poses significant risks and concerns for the community. I implore the authorities and decision-makers to consider alternative locations and engage in transparent dialogue with the community to find a solution that benefits everyone involved. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments, Murad Azimi. Is there a speaker from in the room who'd like to speak? Yes? Long day for you. Welcome, if we can have your name for the record again and...
Thank you. Michelle Dignan?
You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Counsel, I want to highlight just how we don't have enough information about this proposal to move forward. I've reached out to B C Housing and Vancouver Coastal Health to get answers. And some of them are here tonight, so maybe they'll have the answers. One of the, one of my emails was regarding detox. Unfortunately, I still have no reply. Listening to the answers that Megan Coleman from Vancouver Coastal House, Coastal Health, provided on the night of the second hearing, and I quote, "Referrals to detox will be offered to residents who want to take that approach." So I have been looking for clarification on this. As to me, it sounds like if a person who has substance use issues wishes to detox, they will be referred to another facility, which suggests they will lose their housing. Just let that sink in. I have started discussions about drugs and alcohol with my seven-year-old daughter, who's sitting right next to me, about how these substances can be used in moderation, as a lot of us who are here tonight do. The difference is when the substance starts to control you. The data pointed out tonight by an earlier speaker, Paula Newfield, and the suggestions put forward by Jennifer Foster are very insightful. And I hope counsel really listens to what they said. Dr. Summers presented last hearing that large-scale facilities where people who have substance use issues are put together with people who do not, do not have positive outcomes. Here, we are setting up a facility to house people that are homeless, a number with substance issues and severe addiction, a judgment-free and confirmed overdose prevention site in the building. And yet, if they decide to detox, they may be referred to off-site. Again, if the project team can clarify this, I would appreciate it. I have a fundamental issue when I am telling my kids not to let substances control them. Yet my, our tax dollars are going towards a facility that not only enables it, but authorizes it. You are entrapping these residents that have substance use issues for a life of addiction. I wrote to B C Housing over nine days ago regarding information on the funding of this project, including grants, and I am still yet to get any answers. I asked if Naomi could receive my email, as she seems to know the most when presenting to counsel. Unfortunately, still nothing. Breaking down Naomi's answers in the hearing last week, because that seems to be the only place we get answers now. Naomi mentions, sorry, because I understand that this is part of the permanent housing plan. I can find no information regarding numbers online pertaining to this project, to this plan or this project. Naomi mentions that this proposal has a capital cost of 33 million, with operational funding of a minimum of 2.5 million for support services for 60 years and an additional 1.7 million in operating costs for the five complex care beds. However, there is no mention of parameters of this funding. Speaking to some counselors that sit before me tonight... Sorry, just finding where I am. We discussed the need for this funding from the provincial government to be able to fund this project, as the district can't afford to do it without the grant, which I understand. However, can it be a dry facility and still get the grant? Can it be a family-oriented facility and still get the grant? Why are we in this place of such a rigid proposal, where there could be a more amenable proposal that houses the homeless and be a positive addition to this community? If the district is considering a gift of the land for 60-year lease, waiving the $700,000 development fee and a fast-track development process so that, so they can break ground in just a few months, maybe there is a private developer that would be interested in a similar project with a much better proposal that meets the community's needs and concerns. I'll just continue, I'm almost finished. What are the parameters around this grant? Who decides those parameters for the grant? Can a detox facility be provided within the facility and the supports associated with that? Last hearing, a question was asked about the most challenging aspect of supportive housing once it's up and operating. Naomi answered that it was staffing, recruitment, and retention. And it, and so basically, resources. Counselor Mury followed up with, will we have appropriate support for this facility? Naomi answered that they ensure they are hiring the right operator.
Ms. Dignan, if you could draw to a close, please. We're into repeating previous information as well.
Okay, which is LUMA. It was never been discussed if there were other bids from other operators for this project. This is relevant, as LUMA, along with 12 other supportive housing operators, released a statement on November the 7th.
Draw to a close, please.
Okay. What I'm referring to is they are owed a lot of money at this stage, and there's operating costs. Is the canary in the mine? There's already issues with the number-one issue that Naomi mentioned. And if we don't address it, this facility will fail. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, so we are going to take a break at this point. We take a break at about nine o'clock every time, give everybody a chance to stretch their legs. My, my friend, the mayor of the City of North Vancouver, a community health nurse, would say that sitting is the new smoking. We need everybody to get up and have a bit of a stretch. We've got washrooms across the hall for people's comfort. We're going to take about an eight-minute break. We're going to do our best to hold to that. I would request that counsel come to the back room for just a minute, and then we'll return back to the public meeting as quickly as we can. Thank you very much. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to resume the hearing. So if I could have people take their seats, that'd be appreciated. Okay, so if I can have everyone take their seat, please. From time to time, through the, through the hearing, we do have clarifying questions from counsel shared with the staff that are then referred back to the applicant and other parties to get responses to. There have been a few clarifying questions that have shown up over the course of the first part of the evening. And so I'm now going to call on Ms. Atva to read those questions into the record and get our responses, please.
Thank you very much. Good evening, your worship members of council, community members. I see four questions. The first one, will this be a building with a mix of tenants? Those with addictions and those without? Is there a percentage? Will there be an emphasis on those with addiction to assist them rather than just refer them? And Thompson Guppy from Development Planning will respond.
Thank you. Yes, this is, this supportive housing project is a project that will have a mix of tenants. So, and we got into this a little bit in the Q and A before, in case you're looking for specifics. So without repeating it all, this is a project that is for adults, but that includes seniors. This is a project for all genders, so that's both men and women. This is a project that will include people who have addictions and those who do not. In terms of access to services, this, we just... So people will be provided with the support they need to access treatment, whether that is provided by staff onsite or through referrals to specialized treatment that is off-site.
Thank you. Ms. Atva, next question, please.
Thank you. Next question, would children be allowed to visit this building?
And yes, children are allowed, family members are allowed, and that's part of the healing process.
Thank you. Will residents from the downtown east side be moved to this project?
I, this is a project for local residents. So it is for North Shore residents. Now that said, you could have grown up on the North Shore, lived here your whole, your life, but now find yourself in need of housing, because we have so little supportive housing on the North Shore. You may be temporarily housed somewhere else and then come back to a local venue once one is available.
But to be clear...
It is for residents of the North Shore.
However, a person who is living rough, unhoused, insecure housing on the North Shore for a period of time may also be considered a person from the North Shore.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would detoxing in another facility jeopardize a resident's housing in the project?
No, that does not jeopardize their housing. Those who are referred to and go to detox will not lose their housing.
That is the last question we see.
Gets us up to date with clarifying questions. Okay, so the next, what I'm going to do, I've got four virtual participants that have raised their virtual hand. I haven't really given the room an opportunity to raise their hand, so I'm just going to go back and forth. So the first speaker that I have at this point is, well, sorry, first catching back up with Peter Thanis. Peter had a technical difficulty and was disconnected from the meeting. Peter, can you hear me?
Hello?
Yes, hi, welcome. Sorry, we lost touch with you about three minutes into your five-minute period, so...
Yeah, I'm really, I'm really sorry about that. My laptop died. My, my mistake, of course, right? I was just about to get into some of the statistics of crime, right? And, I mean, I know we've had some panelists come up and say that there's, it wasn't really a concern for an increase in crime around the supportive housing developments. But the reality, I think, is a little bit different than that. I've emailed the stats and the links to, to counsel, right? But from what I've been able to kind of gather, I mean, just from the supportive housing development that was set up in Olympic Village, right? I think the, the statistics show that the V P D received the whopping 972 calls just from that supportive housing development in Olympic Village. That's a 17,000% increase over the previous two years. So does the district have a plan to combat that? Is the R C N P equipped to deal with a 17,000% increase in calls? Let's say hypothetically, right? And the fire department handle that increase? Can the ambulance service also handle that increase? Is the district going to foot the bill for that? I mean, we're witnessing this happening in, I think, in Coquitlam. Brad West is calling on the province to cover their policing expenses, which have increased in that municipality by a lot as well. I've sent you the link for that as well in my email. I don't think that the solution here is, is... I, I think we need to make, is there any way for a decision to be delayed? I mean, can we, can we talk to the private sector and maybe find a better path forward? That's another thing that I think maybe we should all consider, especially considering the area there is, is a prime development area. And I think there's a lot of future potential there that could be frustrated by such a development.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments, Peter Thanis. Okay, thank you very much for your comments, Peter Thanis. Okay, so the next speaker that I have is virtual participant Sayed. Uh, and they were on the call just a moment ago, but I'm not seeing Sayed. So they've moved back to the attendees. Can we move them over as a panelist, please? Just be a couple seconds here.
Sayed, can you hear me? Can you, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, clearly welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you very much for having me. I just want to look at these, uh, meetings and the issues that, in different angle. So one of the speakers, just in favor of this project talk, and said that the people in opposition of this project are in minority. I want to prove it is not right. As this moment I'm talking, there's a petition, uh, says, stop this project, and people who are opposed this project have signed this petition. Right now, one-thousand-six-hundred-sixty-seven, uh, people sign this petition, this petition being signed. This is the first thing. At second, I've followed these, uh, meetings. One, the first one in person I attended. And this is the fourth one, I believe. And obviously and clearly, you could say that by counting the number of people in opposition and in favor, that which one is minority and which one is majority. And I believe, and it's obvious, the people in opposition are, uh, in majority. I, I'm resident of this neighborhood by walking five minutes away from the proposal land. So I'm not from Kitsilano. I say specifically Kitsilano, because in the last session, a lady came from Kitsilano. And in, she was in favor of this project. I'm not from Kitsilano, I'm not from British properties. I'm not from, uh, Shaughnessy on those areas. I'm from five minutes away, the homeowner, taxpayer, property taxpayer. Eight years I've been here. My wife and I work hard. Immigrated to Canada. And by hardworking, being able to move to North Vancouver to raise our children, to be a safe place. So this is the second thing. The, the, the other things that another speaker, uh, the lady called, lady called Julie, uh, said that, uh, said something about the, uh, shelter on Second and Bywick. Because of my previous job, I had to pass that shelter on Bywick and said, uh, Second several times a day, four or five times a day. I, I picture you, one, one of the events I was witnessing. And there is a record for that in RCMP as well, because I saw RCMP, North Vancouver, RCMP was there. Two residents of that shelter, one of them covered in blood. Why, when I got there, it was, the police was there and it, 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 and then I, uh, I figure out that the fighting was over a bottle of alcohol beverage. And again, it was a horrifying picture. Yes, I've seen these around the shelters. The other one that is in Travelodge, I don't want to repeat it, everybody knows. I, I've been there too. I've seen those, the, around that Travelodge too, so. The other thing I, uh, I want to mention that still I'm in shock from the previous speaker, that's a seventeen-thousand-percent increase in just after that shelter was opened there. The other thing is that it's about majority and minority. As my understanding how a democratic system works, the majority would be here. That's simple. That's simple. You want to picture us, the people in minority, of favor of this project, a rosy garden after that? We live here, we are majority, and you can say that by this petition and by the speakers on opposition of this, we don't want this project here, because of the location, that's simple. This is the democratic system. Again, please, Mr. Mayor and, uh, council members, listen to majority. And the other thing is the safety of the, I, I, I'm gonna go to the end. And the, the, the safety of the residents, if this approved by the highway, would you forgive yourself if one of these homeless people or mental health, uh, problem people get hit by a car during a busiest intersection in, in the North Shore or the highway? Would you forgive yourself because of approving this project? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your comments, Sayed. Just gonna check in with the room, is anybody else? Yes, on the left, thank you so much. My left. And then I'm gonna go to a virtual participant, and then I'll come back to Stephanie after that. Welcome, when you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing for a second time.
For the record, I'm Ruah. I live seven-hundred meters from this site, and again, I'm speaking more to constituents than to council. Firstly, I'm not sure why so many people seem to be putting so much weight in comparing this project to the Travelodge. It's been made abundantly clear that the Travelodge, a converted motel, was an emergency solution from the COVID years rather than a purpose-built facility. Of course, it would have shortcomings, and even despite those shortcomings, we heard on the twenty-first from a woman in her seventies how important that facility has been to her, how without it she would be on the street, how she foreseeably will be back on the street once that location is decommissioned. Next, I want to talk about the places many of you do not want a project like this to be near. We've heard that it should not be near schools, daycares, parks, trails, places where there are many elderly people living, residencies in general, busy roads, highways, small businesses, businesses that sell alcohol, businesses that sell cannabis. Am I missing anything? Can you think of anywhere that checks all of these boxes? Some of you lament accusations of a lack of empathy, because you do want this sort of housing somewhere, just not here. However, it seems like the only place many of you would be happy with this going is in a barge in the middle of the inlet. The only realistic alternative location that's been suggested is near the hospital, and I thought that suggestion was a decent one until I thought about it for more than a couple minutes. The only locations alongside the hospital where this could be placed without first demolishing an existing structure are parking lots, which would mean this project would have to include shared underground parking to both service this facility and the prior facility, making the construction more costly and time-consuming. And with how many of you think that this facility would be a crime-ridden hellscape, I doubt you'd be too keen on it sharing underground parking with other facilities. This is also an area with residencies, with many elderly residents, near busy roads, near places to buy alcohol, a few blocks away from a park. So it seems like this location would not be addressing many of your concerns. Some of you also demand this be placed next to a police station, but do many of you not claim this facility would make its surroundings akin to the downtown east side? There's a police station very close to Hastings and Main, so I'm not sure why having this facility right near one would alleviate your concerns. On top of all that, the hospital is in the CNV. The district doesn't have the authority to place this facility there. I also thought, as some of you had said, that it could be a good idea to have separate locations for residents who do have substance use issues and those who don't, again, until I thought about it for more than a couple minutes. Would this mean that if someone in the sober facility developed a substance use issue, that they would be kicked out, kicked to the street if there are no vacancies in another facility? Would it be the same if someone in the non-sober facility got clean? There's a few of your concerns about what this would be near that I would like to delve into. Some of you talk like this facility's residents would be constantly in a daze, wandering out into the street. Yet in the years since the conversion of the Travelodge, which is near a very busy road, there's been just one instance of a fatal collision with pedestrian and, uh, connected to that facility. This fact does not reflect the severity of the issue that many seem to imagine. We also hear people talk about the area adjacent to this project as a sort of idyllic family neighborhood and the location itself like some sort of cornerstone of the local ecosystem, then hear that this facility would be a horrible place to live, in which no one would want to live, due to proximity to traffic. Which is it? Proximity to businesses that sell alcohol and cannabis also seem to be a moot point, since, as we heard on the seventh, businesses such as the one Graham Alexander mentioned he founded are delivering those products anyways. The concerns about proximity to a dispensary are particularly ludicrous. It is cannabis. It seems like some of you never grow out of believing anti-drug propaganda from the Nixon era. There's more to be concerned about from caffeine than cannabis. I also want to touch a bit on Mr. Alexander's proposal. Some of you worry about the traffic from this facility contributing to an already congested area and about ability for emergency services to access the site. These worries should only be exasperated by a proposal to drastically increase the number of new residencies in the area than was initially proposed. He suggests that drug, the drug consumption site should be in Sunrise Park, where there are often used trails, where there are residencies still a very short distance away. And, as I said on the twenty-second, there is a soccer field where dozens of children are coached, rather than within the structure that the residents of the supportive housing would reside in. From what was presented on the seventh and today, his proposal also would not have adequate provisions to prevent drug use within the supportive housing or drugs being obtained and used in other areas, only that it moves the supervised consumption site a bit more than a block away. It doesn't seem that he actually values your concerns, but rather is attempting to exploit them to make a buck. Well, I do think we need more housing of all sorts in, in this, um, city. I don't support it at the cost of the integrity of the supportive housing, particularly coming from someone who on multiple occasions has bragged about connections with Musk, a union-busting narcissist who increasingly promotes far-right talking points such as the white replacement conspiracy theory. Lastly, I want to touch on concerns on a lack of criminal record checks, the allowance of drugs in the facility, and protections for renters. These are all things that also apply to traditional residencies. In fact, it's against regulation for landlords in B.C. to require a criminal record check. So why do many of you only raise an issue with it when it comes to the economically disadvantaged? Lament accusations of classism all you want, but that does seem like a textbook case of classism.
Ruah, if you could draw to a close, that'd be appreciated.
To provide some anecdotes, since many of you put more value in those than statistics, I live in a house which has two units. There has been police called to the unit below me when one of its residents was on acid, freaking out and smashing up the place. This is a traditional residency, not supportive housing. It's just a reality of living near other people. When it comes to interpersonal violence, the only physical attack I've ever directly faced in my adult life was from a now-former roommate, who was not by any means short for cash, who worked two jobs, did competitive MMA, had a modern make-of-car, never had to worry about whether he could make rent.
Sorry, we are way beyond your time.
All right.
You do have the opportunity to sign up for a third time to speak, just so you're aware. Uh, I'm just gonna have to go through other speakers first. Okay. Uh, the next speaker I have is virtual participant Amy Bamford, followed by in-person Stephanie Wilson. Amy Bamford can, oh, uh, Amy was on the panel. Amy Bamford, you are still on the attendees list. I don't see your virtual hand up, um, so I'm going to assume that you're not interested in speaking at this time. Sorry, which? That, that may be, but, uh, we'll add her to the list at the end. Don't worry, we'll come back and we'll create another opportunity, that's fine. It's just a, uh, a pass at this point. So then I'm gonna call on Stephanie Wilson here in the room, and then I have a virtual participant with the name IG. We'll come to IG next. Uh, welcome, when you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. Before I get started, I wanted to point out how ridiculous it is to argue that people on rail, welfare or other income supports will make a meaningful impact on the number of cars on the road. I also want to point out that research supports a range of housing models, and what's missing is congregate supportive housing like twelve-hundred East Keith. There is already dispersed housing around Lake Creek. Julian Summers' own claims around congregate housing were disputed by the co-lead of the project that led to his claims of Vancouver at home. And for the record, I also live in North Vancouver, and I'm not paid to be here. First, the matter of the Residential Tenancy Act has come up several times, and I think it's important to share why asking that twelve-hundred East Keith operate outside of the RTA is incredibly problematic. One of the primary purposes of the RTA is the dispute resolution process, because disputes are part of housing, no matter where you live. It's far from perfect, but it does ensure that both sides have their say in the matter. There are housing operators in B.C. that work outside of the RTA, and in some cases, that has created housing instability and even resulted in people losing housing. When people are housed outside of the RTA, there is no appeal. There is no process to serve notice. There is no requirement of evidence or fact-seeking. People in these housing units have been evicted with no notice, and unfortunately, at times unquestionable grounds. Restricting the rights of people in supportive housing comes from a desire to police marginalized people. Forcing marginalized people to pass purity tests in order to be allowed into a community is, quite frankly, disgusting. No one is doing that to people in market housing. It is simply a way to justify the abhorrent act of segregation. I live at a market rental in a strata title building. My lease did not require a criminal record check, because criminal record checks are a legal gray area in B.C., and tenants are not obligated to consent to a criminal record check. No one asked about my substance use habits or demanded my mental health records, because doing so would be illegal and a violation of my privacy rights. All I had to do was email a property manager, look at a unit, and transfer them a bunch of money. Second, the number of people claiming that outsiders threaten North Vancouver is shocking. I didn't grow up in North Vancouver or even the Lower Mainland. I moved south for new opportunities, like so many of my northern brethren. No one has ever questioned why I moved here or wondered if I was displacing real North Vancouverites. In fact, several, several neighbors went out of their way to welcome me in. Uh, I know that there are a lot of rumors around where homeless people in Metro Vancouver come from, but I also know that no one deserves to die alone in the cold on a sidewalk, whether they've been in North Vancouver their entire lives or moved here from somewhere else in the province. I want to read a quote that Prince George resident Coral Henry shared with the CBC in twenty-twenty-one when discussing her work helping unhoused people survive the winter. She said, "I've seen people in tears. There was a man and a woman, they were holding each other, sitting on each other's feet, blowing on each other's feet. And the woman said, 'I don't want to die like this.' No one deserves to suffer in the cold in a province where there is more land than people. We have so much here, we have so much more than most in the world. I don't care where people come from. If people come here for a better chance of survival and eventually need supportive housing, then there is room for them in North Vancouver." We also live in one of the safest and most affluent areas in a country that is already the safest, among the safest and most affluent in the world. To think that any of that will change over sixty-five units of supporting housing is just out of touch with reality. There are hundreds of new units in construction, approved for construction, or preparing for approval across the North Shore. This isn't about space, this is about stigma and discrimination. To be completely honest, it's been hard to come to these hearings. Between the open house and public hearing days, I've spent almost sixteen hours listening to some really awful bullshit. There is so much going on in the rest of the world right now, like ongoing genocide in Palestine, Sudan, and the Democratic Republic of Congo. Sometimes I wonder if a single housing development even matters, but it does matter. It matters because there is a precariously housed person in my neighborhood who has been on a waitlist for years, almost as long as I've lived there. It matters because there is a couple living in our, in NRB by Capilano River without heat in the winter. It matters because seniors who lost their housing after a rent increase are tenting by Mosquito Creek. How we treat people at home speaks more about our values and character than anything else. So if we want to show up in the world as caring and compassionate, that has to start at home, in the way we treat our own neighbors. I'm wrapping up, sorry. No one owns a community, or at least its spirit and its soul. We all contribute, and we all benefit from the richness of life that comes when everyone feels safe and supported enough to share their talents and dreams and goals. That's the community I want. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Stephanie Wilson. Uh, the next speaker I have is virtual speaker IG, and is there another speaker from here in the room that would like to speak? Just raise your hands, I saw that hand first, so I'll come to you first, and then we'll go there and then there. So, uh, virtual speaker IG, can you give us a name for the, for the record? We'd appreciate that.
Absolutely, I'm sorry for my laziness in not typing out my name. My name is Ishan Gupta, and I live on Premier Street. Thank you, council members, for letting me have this opportunity to kind of speak about this project. I'm not gonna lie, it's a fairly difficult act to follow the last two pro-speakers, simply because, uh, I don't know, while I'm hearing. I don't know, while I'm hearing their arguments, it just almost seems like they're making all the points about why we should not have this project. Or, uh, you know, whether it's access to, I mean, just all the traffic and everything else. So I'm trying to settle myself from fairly the illogic of the last previous speakers and I'm just gonna try and make my initial points. Council members, you have heard a number of people speak about the infrastructure issues that will exist now irrespective. I don't think homeless people will necessarily be driving around in cars, but there is a, there's always a direct impact on the management of any kind of traffic movement when there are people who are, you know, at like, who have mental health issues or drug use. Uh, we have had multiple people who have, uh, who are working in the field directly, including myself, who have worked with people who are, you know, who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. And we have already seen that there are multiple different models such as distributed housing or integrating people into specific houses as opposed to just lumping a group of people together. That is kind of in, like, that is fairly inhumane. So there are a lot of points that have been made about why this, you know, nobody is opposed to helping those at risk. Nobody is opposed to helping the homeless. What's being questioned here is two things. One is how effective is this, um, you know, proposal that you've made? Or like, sorry, that proposal that has been made. And secondly, do we have the infrastructure to kind of just support it at multiple levels? Um, you know, when people are arguing about, I've, I've come from a poor family. I grew up in a rough part in India. I, there's a reason I don't live there anymore because I worked hard to get out of there. Because there was difficulty, there was crime, there was danger. Now, was it everybody who was like that? Absolutely not. But like some previous speaker said, it just takes one or two people out of fifty to kind of mess it up for everyone. As recently as last week, I was downtown Vancouver with my wife and, you know, we just had, uh, we had to call nine one one because somebody was ODing and four shots of Narcan down, wasn't doing it. And, you know, we're busy doing chest compressions and trying to get the person to stay alive while the ambulance arrives. I'm not sure I want my child who also goes to the daycare, park, place, montessori directly opposite the proposed site. I'm not sure that's an experience I want her to be having. Um, I think there have been a lot of anecdotes thrown from both sides. They make for a good commentary around, you know, tugging at the heartstrings. Uh, I think it's very easy for both sides to label the other, you know, pro and for like for and against. And, um, I would hope that we can stay away from that and then instead focus on facts. The facts do not care about people's feelings. The fact is, according to the American Edition, uh, you know, Addiction Centre, seventy-five percent of people who are, have some kind of substance abuse will commit a violent crime. Even if that's only ten units over there, we're looking at seven to eight people who are gonna commit a violent crime in this place in North Vancouver, right next to a child, like, uh, sorry, like the childcare facility, right next to multiple parks, right next to frankly, a nice place to live, which has been a nice place to live because there has been a sense of safety. Uh, I want to be very clear, as somebody who has been, as one would argue, poor in a different country, I'm, I have zero desire to not help people. But I think there's a wise way in doing this and I'm just not sure that the approach being proposed is actually the most sensible. I'll just end by saying, you know, I'm sorry if it comes across as being a little crass. This proposal makes no sense based on a lot of studies, but just for this little anecdote, it's like taking a bunch of nymphomaniacs and throwing them in one massive complex and hoping that they'll somehow cure themselves. With that, thank you for giving me the chance to speak.
Yeah, thank you very much for your comments. Um, the next speaker I have is uh, uh, upfront right here and then I've got, uh, Dan Sohan, uh, virtual, then I believe Bill, uh, if I'm correct, over here. Then I've got virtual participant Graham, then I've got, uh, sorry, Red Flannel in the row, fourth row, uh, on the right there. Uh, then Sarah Third Virtual, then Luana Virtual and Todd Martin Virtual, just so everybody is aware of where we're at at this point. Uh, so if you could please welcome, uh, come and if you could, uh, share your name again for the record. I believe it's your second time speaking, but, uh, welcome.
Yes, thank you. Uh, good evening to everyone. My name is Natasha Dotman.
Welcome. When you're ready, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm experiencing a little bit of problems with my eyes, but, um, uh, I'm, I'm gonna do my best to, um, address some issues that I have jotted down on, uh, on my notebook. Uh, okay, uh, I've heard some statements. Some of them are quite, uh, preposterous. And including one of them as an example. A couple of individuals mentioned that if you have the mentally ill and the drug addicted individuals who are not required to rehabilitate, can find employment in the businesses in the surrounding. But that is just, it cannot be any more absurd because, uh, one of them also addressed that, for example, retail is a very easy field to get into and it does not require any skills or any special requirements. But this is just totally, uh, being out of touch with reality. Because I know quite a few people in our neighborhood who are trying, they're like healthy, good-looking, well-spoken individuals. Some of them are educated. They cannot get employment. They have tried, uh, in many places, but they haven't even given them any interview. And then who's gonna give, uh, employment? I mean, if I have, if I own a store, I don't wanna have people who might steal or they might act strange as, uh, I have encountered the same thing. I didn't know what was going on. I went to Loblaw's, uh, Lawn still at one point and I was, um, at the customer service desk, wanted to exchange something and one, a woman.
I'm just gonna, Natasha.
Yes.
You are in your third time speaking, so I'm gonna press you to speak about the proposal before.
Sure, okay, but, uh, I had the experience with someone who had mental issues. I didn't know when I acquired in the head office that she was acting so strange and was sort of attacking towards the customers. I was told that she was part of the program for, uh, reintegration of, uh, of mentally ill people into community, but she created nothing but problems. But, uh, well, that's just, um, beside the point. But the thing is, uh, that, that's just one of the examples, sorry. I just brought as an example that what can happen. And then, uh, I was told by someone here that if there is issues, police will, uh, arrive, the police will attend, but no, my sister, uh, uh, rented her two suites downstairs. Uh, one of them, the two bedroom, two three guys who pretended to be the students, but they were drug users and they started bonfire inside in a common place. And then the gentleman who was, uh, the tenant of the, uh, other suite saw that, he called the police, police didn't come and he goes to my sister and says, "Look, this is what they're doing." And my sister was begging them to put out the, uh, fire. They wouldn't. My sister called the police three times. The police did not arrive, but somebody here was not believing me. But this is what happened and this kind of behavior can repeat themselves. We can see, we will witness that kind of dangerous behavior. And if like these people, uh, get housed comfortably there, then they get their bodies coming to them and the body see, oh, hey, there's so much spaces to hide around here and then they start their fire and when they're doing their drugs and everything, they can cause fire and their fire can spread to the, uh, nearby houses and the disaster. Just imagining the disaster that they can create by just fire, but just one, we just need one fire to have disaster and the misuse of the, uh, resources and everything. And, uh, so people, I mean, uh, I tried to go into the, the points that I wanted to, uh, mention that, uh, constant arrival of ambulances and police and if the, if the police attends, the fire trucks in addition to the already existing traffic and the noise we're experiencing. And also the sense of, the, the lack of, uh, sense of safety for the, uh, residents in the area will definitely impact our health negatively. And we need our health, our, all the employed, uh, people in the area are paying property taxes, income taxes that supplement, uh, the incomes or the supports that, uh, people who cannot work or do not want to work. Their health and well-being will be impaired and they need their health and, uh, peacefulness. They need their, uh, peace and tranquility, uh, to recharge themselves and be able to continue to work and pay the taxes and support these kinds of people. And then, as I mentioned the other time, I showed you the picture of the half naked guy who was residing in one of those supportive houses. Let's say these kinds of people go out there and while they're airing their genitals, they see a woman or they see a child and they could seize the opportunity because their voices in their heads and or their, the being impaired by the drugs can make them do very irrational things that, just like my friend who received eleven stab wounds and was killed, eleven stab wounds for the eleven years that she lived. And this kind of thing can happen. I'm sorry. Thank you so much. Sorry for, I got passionate, but I'm really scared and worried.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, the next participant is, I believe, uh, Dan Sohan. Um, I noted that's a virtual participant, I believe, and yet I don't see them on the panel. So I believe Dan Sohan.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there we go. Uh, yes, I can. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Great. Uh, thank you for, uh, the council for, uh, hearing my opinion. Uh, so, yeah, my name is Dan Sochan. I'm a resident owner in the Salem Village area. Um, I do not support, uh, the current proposal. Um, I'm on the strata council and I've spoken with, uh, council members at the, uh, council from Beacon and from, uh, Hunter, um, Ling Creek as well. And, and it's, when I'm hearing people saying that, um, it's a small percentage that don't necessarily, uh, support the proposal. I, I think as you've heard, those who have indicated that they actually live within a few kilometers of it, um, are typically opposed. Um, and I think it's a very unfair characterization, representation of how people feel. It's not necessarily about homeless or about the poor. It's really about the choice of location. And also I think what concerns me is the fast tracking of this process as numerous people have identified how there's a lot of reports, uh, that would typically be done that haven't been, uh, completed or shared. I've spent the last five, six hours, I've been following a bit on the, the last, uh, two previous sessions as well, listening, but I've spent the last five hours just going through all the documents available. Uh, there's several links that are dead, uh, don't work, you know, looking at what complex housing means from the, uh, D N V website to then B C housing to their link, then takes you to nowhere. It takes you just to generic, let's talk, uh, website. And so I think there's a lot of critical information that still hasn't really been, uh, surfaced or discussed. And, um, I think that needs to be properly, uh, that information gathered and then given to the community to be discussed. Um, so I feel like the headline has been buried that supportive housing, uh, i- is one aspect, but it's really about concerns around the, uh, complex care as well as the listing of what the additional services are. I, I've tried to read through and see where I could find information specifically around sort of safe injection sites, websites, and I can't find information, uh, that outlines that and certainly not anywhere at sort of the top of any of the, um, summaries from the D N V's public hearings or what this proposal is about. And I think that's what really brings up, uh, a lot of concerns where there's only five, um, safe injection sites in all of B C, uh, with downtown Vancouver, Surrey and with Victoria. And so there are not a lot of, um, information about it in terms of especially like the specific areas and what impact that has to those areas as well as, uh, if that's also as part of a housing complex. Uh, cause that isn't part of, uh, the downtown safe injection site. You know, going through again, like just seeing how that the process, the first read is on October second. Um, and then it was for October seventeenth to fifteenth, uh, it was providing input to B C housing, which I question why input was to B C housing and not to the D N V City Council. We elected you to represent us, not B C housing. They're actually not, uh, elected representatives at all. Um, to then have it go from that first hearing, it's only seven weeks later, uh, planning for potentially initial decision. And now this is required for total, uh, public hearings. Um, that I think a lot of people today have brought up valid concerns, uh, discussions about, um, increase they've seen first, additional first respondent, uh, requirements at the travel lodge. Um, as well as kind of a lack of supports from, uh, R C M P or police on potential impacts. Um, you know, when I look at this area, just between, on mountain highway between Main Street and, uh, Keith Road, there's been over two thousand new units built over the last five years. So that's a lot of, um, new people coming into this community, uh, a lot of couples and families. And over the next five years, there's closer to twenty-five hundred, three thousand new units already, uh, planned and there's many more still in proposal. So we're one of the fastest growing districts, uh, and neighborhoods in all of Metro Vancouver. And it feels like we haven't really had the opportunity to, uh, provide our voice and input i- in a fair way that's not just talking about the supportive housing like those, uh, potentially at risk for homeless, but all the additional services that are gonna be provided on that location. Um, and what information we have around that and potential impacts. Uh, so, uh, yeah, I thank you for your time today.
Uh, thank you for your comments, Dan Sochan. Uh, next I have Bill, when I believe you're coming up for your third time speaking, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm going through rec.
Uh, welcome when you're comfortable. Uh, you'll have, uh, five minutes to address the hearing. I did just wanna say the next speaker on my list is Graham, joining us virtually. But again, I, I actually don't see Graham attached to the meeting at this time, so unless that changes, the next person will be the red shirt over here, please. So, please.
Hi, yeah, thank you. My name is Bill Dewley. I live in Lynn Valley. Uh, this is my third time speaking. As I'm sure you're all aware, I oppose this, uh, project. Um, having said that, I would like to say that I think that, uh, one of the previous speakers, uh, Ruah, made an excellent point about the, uh, cannabis dispensary. If the substance abuse issue, uh, that the people in that building faced was edibles, I don't think we'd have a problem. Um, so I think that makes, I, I think he makes a good point. And I think some of the issues that we're all focusing on, um, we have to take a look at and I, I agree with Ruah on that one. But that's, that's not really what I came up here to ask, but I came, uh, for two things, surely. One is one issue that keeps coming up is if you oppose this project, you must be a terrible person. Uh, and I disagree with that. Um, not, normally I wouldn't bring this up. I don't wanna boast about this, but I might myself have helped homeless people, people on the streets who are in, in need a number of times. Uh, the last time I helped somebody, um, this was pre-COVID. Um, I was leaving work. Um, I was going from my day job to my night job. Um, I worked, used to work downtown. Uh, but then I had a, a job at Capilano University. Uh, so I was rushing to, to get the bus for my night job when I passed a homeless gentleman who was in need. He was walking down the street. He was past the old, um, post office and he had his hand on the wall and as I passed him, I could hear him saying, "Help me, help me." And I passed him and I got a few feet past him and, you know, sometimes somebody says something you don't hear right away. Um, but that registers. So I was well past him when I realized what he said. So I went back because I thought, well, if he's walking down the street with his hand on the wall and he's asking, he's saying, "Help me, help me. He needs help." So I went back to him. I found him. I asked him how he was and he, you know, was definitely in distress. So I called nine one one. I sat with him. Um, and that's all I had to do. I waited till, you know, the paramedics came. Um, I was an hour late for work. Um, my boss gave me shit, but that's fine. Um, and normally I wouldn't bring that up. Uh, I just bring it up, um, because I wanna highlight the fact that wanting to do a project like this right doesn't automatically make you a bad person. Um, so yeah, that, those are what, two things I wanted to say. But the main thing I wanted to ask about now, I'm still a little, you said, um, earlier this evening that this is not a question and answer, period, which I appreciate. Um, but I am curious about questions and how we're supposed to ask questions. Um, I submitted two questions, uh, this morning, uh, by email and I got an email back saying that they'd be submitted to the record and I kind of thought those questions would be read tonight, but they weren't. So I'm just wondering, um, if we have questions about the process, about how the vote goes forward. Cause that's one thing I don't understand. I don't know how the, the vote is gonna happen. I don't know what your criteria are for deciding yes or no. I, I really don't know anything. I come to these meetings. I really don't know anything. I come to these meetings hoping to get answers, but I don't understand the process. This is my very first experience in politics. So I really don't know how anything works. So I'm a little surprised my questions weren't read because, like I said, I got an email back saying, we'll go into the record. So I assumed they'd be read. So just going forward, I'm wondering, when I have questions like. What are your criteria when you make your choice? How how can I get those questions answered? I know it's not a question and answer period, but I'm going to ask that one question.
I have some discretion to intervene, and I think what I'll tell you is that. At the end of the the hearing, I will describe the next steps that that we take. You can also contact the clerk at any point before or after the hearing closes to ask questions about. Procedure and they can respond. If we did receive questions that we felt were already a part of the public record, then they. They were added to the to the book as feedback and are available online, as I said at the beginning of the meeting. So it's obviously when it's strung out over multiple nights, sometimes the direction on these things gets a bit lost, but that's that's the state of things is that the. The best time to ask questions is before the hearing.
Okay, but like I said, I sent an email this morning and I got an email back saying that, you know, my questions will be part of the record. So I'm just wondering. Because I would like answers to those questions, right? It's great that they're going in the public record, but I would like. Answers to those questions. So. When do you think I'll get those answers? Sorry, I don't mean to be obtuse.
I'm assuming they were put into the book with responses, but or the. It was determined that they were already asked and answered in the in the in the hearing possibly, but.
Okay, so then I should go to the book, look up my questions and hopefully there's answers.
There may be, but if if it was something that was already asked and answered in the hearing, then it may already be in the record from some other source. Yeah.
Well, those questions, they certainly haven't come up vocally. I haven't heard them.
And answering and giving responses to every single question that could be asked in the community is actually not a requirement of the public. So we do our best to respond where we can.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next speaker after Bill was again, virtual participant Graham. I don't see virtual participant Graham rejoining the meeting at this point. And so I'm going to move on to the next speaker, which is gentleman in the red shirt over here. And then after that, I have virtual participant Sarah Third. Welcome. When you're comfortably, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you for the time to speak. I wasn't actually able to attend the last meeting because I actually was working. In a lot of these facilities like the one you're proposing.
The. If I could have a name for just.
Sorry, my name is Paul and I live in North Van, very close to where this is.
Thank you.
Said to be built. So when you talk about this, this is a shelter where we're going to basically house a lot of basically people that may have addiction or other types of problems. Including five that have a lot of very serious problems. The it was made very clear that detox is only one step available for those who want it. Basically, if you only got a couple of guys that do want it, you know, they might send a chance to actually get help. But unfortunately, when they're surrounded by all their problems, it's my experience when I've seen people try to do it, it's a pretty tough hole to get out of. The. They also with Luma and B C Housing, they also said that they will not, they don't want to put security up at this facility because it basically can give the wrong image. And the wrong feelings for those like the residents inside. The without security, there's absolutely no accountability for any of the residents in this place. It doesn't provide them with any protection or any other members of the public. I can tell you firsthand experience that these places are absolutely atrocious slums and they get destroyed very quickly. The. I think I'm sort of a point of proof with that is if we talk to our local first responder crews on the North Shore. B C Housing stated how the lookout shelter was a success. But a lot of our first responder crews won't actually enter to treat patients in that facility without a police escort. Sort of speaks to the character of some of the residents that are in there. They also talked about having, you know, lock gates so that basically make sure that they had their own residents in there. They were going to be, you know, inviting other unwanted guests. But it doesn't usually work that way. There's, you know, security, fire safety and a lot of those other problems don't often go hand in hand. So basically, it'll still be a free, you know, a little bit of a free for all. Somebody asked B C Housing regarding any screening. They spent quite a long time defining what a screening is. But they didn't actually say if there was going to be actually any proper screening. The it's also worth noting, it's on public record that B C Housing is in twenty million dollars in debt to organizations such as Luma. So when there was that much in debt, we're talking about all this money and funds going into a Luma facility, basically funneling through B C Housing. How many of the actual residents of this Luma facility are actually going to basically see any of that money? I think, you know, I think whether you're for it or you're against it, everybody actually wants to see the best for people regardless. I want to do my personal job if I didn't care about people, but the model that they're proposing is not a good model. The another statement that's come up a number of times are people's houses have increases in value with these shelters. I have I have been unable to find any correlation where there's been a shelter and houses increased as a direct correlation to these shelters. All the houses are increasing in value because they're increasing in value. It's it's remarkable how fast they're increasing and it's making it very unaffordable. I'm very grateful that I can live here, but it was. You know, it was a lot of work and it was a lot of hours to be able to make that happen for myself and my family. The they also brought up how police calls, you know, for the first six months will go up and after about six months they go down. The. That stat was basically in that document over there provided by Tasman Guppy, which was a ten year old sat that was basically brought by B C Housing. It does seem like a little bit of a conflict of interest when we're getting stats from B C Housing who's supporting this project. The if you actually ever took the time to walk around any, like a tour of these hotels. That are rented by B C Housing, they're absolutely trash. I I took the time to walk along the Travelodge, which basically is still managed by the same group that's talking about this. In my in fifteen minutes, I counted over twenty needles that I found stabbed into the ground. I I was able to see into a room where I could see multiple stolen bikes, stolen televisions. And I know they're stolen because I'm in these facilities all the time. The we talk about crimes, that's not going to you up, but. The proof is right there. It doesn't take a brilliant person to think that somebody on disability can afford a five thousand dollar electric bicycle. The. The. We also need to take a note that there's a lot of people that have spoken that also don't live here. Those talks about people from Carersdale. The that's it's their, you know, their comment should be sort of struck from the record because. As a public hearing, all persons believe that their interest in property affected by the proposed bylaw afforded a reasonable opportunity to be heard. That that statement is out of our basically government mandate website, which completely rooks basically anything that they say. I don't got twenty seconds, so I'll wrap this up. Just because I'm opposed to the location of this facility and concerns how these places operate, it does not mean I don't have compassion. I have compassion. I'm a first responder and I chose this career because I want to help people. And seeing that, I've seen the worst of the worst and stuff of nightmares that will stay with me for the rest of my life. We can all agree that people suffering at which. We didn't need facilities to help people with mental drug issues, but after seeing how bad these facilities get and lack of confidence that you provide me with the lack of information. I'm not convinced that this one will be any different to what I see regularly on the downtown side, including facilities that are run by Luma. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Paul. Next speaker I have is virtual participant Sarah Third. Followed by Lona or Luana. Sarah Third, can you hear me?
Yes, hello.
Welcome. You have five more minutes to address the hearing.
Lovely. Thank you. I've heard several claims that the citizens for this proposal are all non residents of Vancouver or have been paid to be here. And I was just hoping to add a quick voice to help dispel that notion. I do think we're starting to argue with one another, so I'll be very, very brief. I'm a senior software engineer that's worked exclusively in the health, mental wellness and educational sectors for over a decade now. I live and work remotely in horse Vancouver, just a mere five minutes away from this housing proposal. And I regularly walk my dog directly across the street from this location. And I just wanted to say in a quick summary that I believe this is an excellent location. I would love to see this proposal move forward. I think this is a very necessary service in an extremely under-resourced sector. So thank you greatly for your time.
Thank you very much. And. I will just just comment on the the first part there again. The law is very clear. It does. Someone doesn't have to be an immediate neighbor of the site to be heard. And they are welcome to share their points. Having said that. As the evening goes on, I know that people's tendency is to argue with previous testimony and comments from previous speakers. That's not the most compelling stuff for for the council necessarily. And so I would encourage you to keep your comments focused on the. On the proposal at hand, not necessarily deplatforming or criticizing other speakers that have that have come forward. Everybody is welcome to participate. The next speaker I have is Luana, joining us virtually, followed by Todd Martin. Sorry, that Luana, can you hear me? I see Luana's iPhone on the panel, but you are muted.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, is this Lona Luana?
No, this is Armita. I think it's something wrong.
Sorry, I'm sorry. This is not, this is not Luana?
No, this is Armita.
Okay.
You just.
So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to mute you again, and we're just going to double check because we've got someone else on the list first. And may I say it's it's best to have your virtual name reflect your a name we can use. So. To the person who says, it just says iPhone, that's hard to distinguish. If you could. Change that, that'd be helpful. Luana, can you hear me or Lona? Okay, maybe they're having technical difficulties or something. I will double check back in, but at that point I'm going to mark them as. As passed withdrawn and we'll we'll double check back in. The next speaker I have is Todd Martin. And then I'm going to come back to the room here and see if anyone else would like to speak from the room, but I have virtual participant Todd Martin.
Hi there.
Hi, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. I'm a resident in Lynn Valley. It's a great family community, which we raise our young families in. I oppose the project due to being a family community. I want to keep our community safe. And one thing I just don't understand, and we I think we've got to use common sense. I don't understand why the two closest retail locations. Is it is a liquor store and a cannabis store. Near this project. I just don't understand that. But anyways, I oppose the project. I want to keep it a family community. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Todd Martin. Come back to the room. Would anybody else like to address the hearing? Yes, on the aisle, third row there. Welcome. If you could just start with your name for the record, appreciate that.
Good evening. My name is Homer Rasta. And thank you for this opportunity. I didn't want to come up and speak. This is the first time. And I believe that all of us, we do care about unhoused individuals. And we try to help them and support them in any ways. But I oppose the location. In the last of two months, I observe the community. And and also my findings basically is based on some numbers. It is, this is my observation for the last two months about this is a very family oriented community. And forty to forty five percent of individuals and people living in this community. Consist of families with one or two children. We have lots of daycares and parks. Trails and daycares. I do walking trails every day and I do younger kids, little ones, walking back and forth to school. And they are safe. The safety is very important. They are secure. They are living in a clean environment. And I think this is what I think. I think they come first. They are our next generation. They come first. Here and we should take this seriously. The ten to fifteen percent around that range are singles. Or couples with no children. This doesn't mean that they are not going to have children in future. And around twenty to twenty five percent of the community are seniors. And they work hard in their lives and they want to have a peaceful life now. They can't just put their heads down on the pillow at night and hear noises and. Screaming and shouting below their bedroom windows, you know, it's it's not right. It's not. They are the residents of this community. We all care about these people very, very much. I myself help them. I don't need to give a lecture here. I do help them. Every week delivering food, food banks, clothing, to eat tastings. But this community is this this location is not right at all. And. I just want to read a poem here, if you don't mind, and this poem is written. On the door entrance of the United Nations by a Persian poet, Sadi. And briefly, I just say. It says, if you do not, if you do not have empathy for human pain. The name of human you cannot retain. And I think all of us believe in that. If I say. I believe this location is not appropriate for this project. This doesn't mean that I do not support them. It's completely different. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Homer Roxa. The next speaker I have is Amy Bamford. And then just a heads up after that, I do need the council's consent to carry on the meeting beyond ten thirty and I will be seeking that after the next speaker. So the next speaker is Amy Bamford. Can you hear me? Well, I hope they can. Must be having some technical issues because unfortunately that's happened on a couple of occasions already this evening. For this participant, Amy Bamford, so. Again, we'll we'll loop back and see if we can connect with Amy Bamford. Okay, and so is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak or get a speaker from the room? Yes, please. And I think you're a second time speaker. If you could just start with your name, just for the record, that'd be great.
It's Ryan Weeb.
Brian Weeb, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to address you today on the matter of the resulting proposal for this supportive housing project. I come before you not as an adversary, but as a concerned member of the community, seeking clarity and insurance regarding the future of this project. One of the paramount concerns we hold is the absence of risk management plans presented by B C Housing and Luma Society. In the event that this. Their projections do not unfold as expected. Every well conceived project plan includes a mitigation strategy acknowledging the uncertainties that may arise from demonstrating. Demonstrating a commitment to responsibility and objective governance. My fellow community members and I seek to understand how the confidence in this project's success has been established. As concerned stakeholders, we inquire about the measures in the place to address potential deviations from the projection outcomes. The absence of a comprehensive risk management plan rises from uncertainties and leaves us wondering about the strategies in place to handle unforeseen challenges. Moreover, when we examine current supportive housing sites, we do not observe a resounding success that instills confidence in the proposed endeavor. It prompts us to question the basis for the council's confidence in the success of the project. Transparency and clarity in this regard are crucial for building trust between the community and those responsible for making decisions that impact our daily lives. We understand that housing vulnerability, vulnerable individuals in a complex task. And we do not wish to oppose this initiative for the sake of opposition. However, the success of such a project should be under. Underpinned by thorough planning, transparent communication and a commitment to adaptability in the face of challenges. In conclusion, we respect. In conclusion, we respectfully request that you provide us with a clear understanding of the risk management plans to place and methodologies used to arrive to the conclusions that the project will proceed with confidence. Our community's well being is at stake, and a comprehensive and transparent approach to these concerns is crucial for fostering mutual understanding and support. I've got a couple of minutes left here, so I'm just going to bring up one more item. Just for your own reference, regarding the district's code of ethics, based off previous actions of some members in this council here at the first hearing and some of the online presence, I'd like to request that you guys potentially do an internal audit based off of, sorry, one second here. Off item one point one two, a member must be independent and impartial and must not provide preferential treatment to any other persons or organizations expected warranted by the ordinary and lawful discharge of their duties. And under item eleven point two, a member must respect that it is a role district employees to provide neutral and objective information without undue influence and interference. That's all I have. If you want to discuss further with me afterwards, I'll be free. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to circle back to Luana, who I think was disconnected for a moment, but was on the list earlier. Lona or Luana, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, clearly, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, thank you. Well, my name is Luana. I'm from Mexico. I have been living here in Canada for almost four and a half years. I live in Hunter Street, a couple of blocks where this project of housing wants to take place. I don't want to be repetitive about all the comments before. I just want to say, we all humans, we all deserve to live with dignity. Since I have been here in Canada, I have been dealing with racism and discrimination at times. Oh, you probably are a drug dealer. Why don't you go back to your country, et cetera, et cetera? So I feel all of this is ridiculous to me. Why people are so discriminating? We're all humans. If I live in a building where probably some neighbors don't like Mexicans, so what? Am I going to get kicked out? And it could apply for any nationalities. Because I might be a threat to community, because I might be a drug dealer or a murderer? Actually, I'm working as an educational assistant, and they turn now in urban. My concern also, parents, where are you teaching to your kids? Do not care about the community? Racism, discrimination, not being compassionate with other people? Do not care because they have a home, a bed, food? Where is inclusivity? Instead of people complaining about it, maybe they should be asking themselves, what can I do as part of this community to help? It's just about working all together to help people. There has been a huge misunderstanding about people living in this project. It's not just bringing people suffering from substance abuse. It's seniors, people with disabilities, and others that have fallen through the cracks. I pay taxes as everyone else. Expensive? Yes, it is. That's why I'm working two jobs. My husband and I work so hard, and we still struggle to survive in urban, between rent, groceries, et cetera, et cetera. It's insane. But if my taxes help people in need to improve their life, I'm totally okay with it. Obviously, this is a project where a lot of organizations need to get involved, including the larger community. So I totally support this project. Thank you for allowing me to speak, even I'm Mexican. And by the way, I'm permanent resident, I'm not illegal. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Luana. Just before we continue, and I do have some more speakers that have already signed up here that I will get to, but I do need to get permission from the council to continue the meeting beyond ten thirty. So I will move the recommendation that we continue to eleven o'clock. Seconded by councillor Forbes, a call to question, all in favor, contrary minded, motion carries. And just so you're aware, our normal procedure is that it just takes a majority of council to exceed past ten thirty at night. It takes a unanimous vote of the council to exceed eleven o'clock at night. We're not, if some municipalities just carry on the public hearing until you finally reach a resolution. We've had, we've had limits in the past, and I intend to honor that as well. So it will take a unanimous vote of council to extend the meeting beyond eleven o'clock. The next speaker I have is virtual participant Byron Wood, followed by virtual participant Armita. Byron Wood, can you hear me? You are muted. Oh, you are not muted in the system, but I still can't hear you. Do you have a speaker microphone connection? Maybe the microphone itself has a mute feature on it or something like that. So Byron, I'm just going to go to Armita next, and then we'll come back to you again. I don't know, maybe unplug your microphones and get going again, but I'm going to go back to Armita first. Armita is joining us, Armita was joining us virtually. Is Armita still on the call? I don't see Armita's name anymore. Okay, there's a participant whose virtual name is just iPhone. I'm going to move you over as a panelist. Please accept the promotion to panelist. And if you could, the person with the name iPhone.
Hello?
Can you hear me? Yes, hello? If you could start your comments with your name for the record, that'd be appreciated.
Of course, sure. My name is Armita, thanks for having me tonight.
This is Armita from the list. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. First of all, thanks for having me tonight, and I really appreciate that. Because the other people mentioned reasons, all the reasons, you know, and we all knows. I don't want to repeat and repeat again and again. And actually, I'm originally North Vancouver, and I'm five minutes away from this project, and strongly oppose this project. I really appreciate that, and all done. Thank you, have a lovely night.
Thank you very much for your comments, Armita.
Thank you, thank you. Good night, bye.
Just going to check back in with Byron Wood. Can you unmute, and we'll give that a try again? I'm not, I'm not hearing you, Byron. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to have the clerk give you the phone in number, or maybe we. So the phone in number should be popping up on your screen right now. And we'll leave that up on the screen so that you can reconnect, and we'll add you to the meeting at that point. Just the next speaker I have is Victor, joining us virtually. Victor, can you hear me? Oh, actually, I'm going to have to move Victor over as a panelist too. Managing these meetings with virtual attendance, in-person attendance is a bit hectic sometimes here. Please be patient here. So Victor, you should have received a prompt to come over as a panelist. I need you to accept that, or I won't be able to get you onto the, onto the meeting. There we go. Okay, Victor, I see you're now on the panel. Can you hear me? You are still muted in the, in the Zoom system. Can you unmute yourself, please?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can clearly hear you. Welcome.
I've spoken before, but some people asked me to speak again. Now, I live nearby, and I'd like to mention a few things with my opinion. Is that, first of all, the homeless and the drug addicts don't mix together. I don't see why they put homeless, mental disability, and people with mental disability and the drug addicts in the same building. That is no good. Everybody can fall and can fall in British Columbia or North America and can have bad, bad circumstances, and they can become homeless. But they shouldn't be placed with drug addicts or mentally retarded people. I think mentally retarded people should have their own place. They have to have a compound for them, for themselves specifically. Now, the drug addicts is a medical question, and that also has to be dealt with separately, and that shouldn't be in North Vancouver, in the district. That's not, that's not going to bring a good name for the district of North Vancouver. And for, and that's gonna, that's, that's not going to be good for us. That's not, that is not, it's going to become like East Hastings. It's going to start another building next to it, and it's going to continue. And they're going to bring their friends, and they're going to bring the drug addicts. And when they come, the drug pushers and whatever, and then there's going to be criminals coming around and whatever, and it's going to become like Surrey. So let's make sure that it doesn't happen. Let's find another spot for this. Everybody doesn't want this to be in this area. I can see there's thousands of people who are opposed to this. So let's put an end to this and, and not talk about it anymore. I, please listen to me, and this is, this is not good for everybody. And it's not a good idea to get this mixture together. And we gotta, I live nearby, and we are happy the way we are. And so is the rest of the people in the building. There is about hundred and eighty families who made a petition, they don't want it. So it's nothing against homeless. Homeless should never be, nobody should be homeless. They should give place for homeless alone, not for people who are drug addicts mixed with them and with the drug pushers. So that's all I have to say. I hope that I made myself clear. And let's bring, let's bring in that location something pleasant for everybody to enjoy. So thank you for giving us opportunity to speak. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you very much for your comments, Victor. I will just say, it's, I think, about the third time in the hearing now, some people have used the term mentally retarded. It's not used anymore. It can be considered very disparaging to people. We encourage you to use a term like a person with mental health challenges, or in some cases, possibly a neurodivergent person. But that phrase is outmoded, and it is considered to be disparaging in many cases. So I will encourage people not to use that term. Again, I'm just going to check in, has Byron Wood been able to connect back up at the meeting? So I'm frantically trying to attach a new microphone or something to it. I really do want the hearing to get the benefit of his comments, but we'll have to figure out that technical challenge. Okay, again, the phone number is up on the screen. If people do want to connect that way, that should be available to you. Would anybody else in the like, in the room like to speak? Ru, you'd like to speak a third time? Come on up. And again, third time speakers, as long as you're not repeating your comments from the past, then you are welcome.
I would just like to finish up my previous statement, if that's all right. The only physical attack I've ever directly faced in my adult life was from a former roommate. I went into, he was not struggling for money by any means. This too was in a traditional residence. He wrapped his hand around my neck and pinned me against a wall. And as he was the leaseholder, it was me who was eventually evicted, not him. So I find it particularly obscene that many of you only raise concerns about criminality or ability to evict a problematic resident when it comes to those who are experiencing housing instability. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ru. Okay, would anybody else like to address the hearing for a first, second, or third time? Please? I believe you've spoken before, just trying to double check. If you could tell us your name for the record, just we.
Yeah. Ed, local resident. Does this just plug in?
Uh, no. No. Actually, if it's a thumb drive you have, it's on the lip, it's on, below the desk in front of you there. Yeah, on your right leg there, yeah, right about there.
Where is that? Is. So my name is Ed, I'm a local resident. I spoke before, and I'm speaking again because, well, because I firmly believe that there hasn't been enough answered questions, really. I went through the document online. It's over fourteen hundred pages, maybe it's over fifteen hundred now, after today. I saw a lady putting some more in. There's a lot, there's hundreds. I was going for it, I was scanning for it, I was constantly seeing people saying, no, I'm very concerned about safety. And this here is what's been given to us by B C Housing on this residency for safety and security. Like, honestly, the safety is a single secure entry? Do they not know about fire escapes? You can literally go out any fire escape, and no one would know they're gone. Twenty-four seven onsite staff? Is that just one person? Is it five? I honestly have no idea. We've never been given these answers, and I know people have constantly been asking for transparency. The resident agreement, we had someone here, yes, last week, who is a manager of a shelter down the road. And he said, if you have these kind of agreements, it's going to be disaster. If you have troublemakers, which Paul pointed out, you can't get rid of them. Like, how are you going to get rid of them? If you got one bad person out of sixty-five, they'll bring the whole thing down, and they will make this facility look like what everybody is concerned about. Regular perimeter checks, again, like, is that one person, the one twenty-four seven staff walking around once a day? It's not much. Cleaning and property maintenance? Great, I'm going to save someone on the street by cleaning something. Wow, I don't know how this would be considered a good safety plan. Cleaning, contact numbers shared with neighbors. The Lewis gentleman who came here on week two said that they will share their number with the neighbors in case anything arises. Well, if they're being burglarized, are they going to call Lewis? Are they going to call the police? Again, the security plan doesn't make sense. Ongoing and open communication with the surrounding community. When this is built, is the district really going to take any notice of us? Or are we just going to have to call up Lewis again and say, look, this guy's doing drugs in our garden? Can you please take him away again? I know, now I won't repeat it, but it happens constantly. These people, unfortunately, they relapse. So this plan, this safety and security plan is all that we have to make us feel good about this project. It's really poor. It doesn't have any information. It's basic. Honestly, for B C Housing, who are apparently experts, providing this? Like, do they provide this for every single, is it the same for basically every house they build? Because if they do, this is pure. It's poor, to be honest. It's poor, to be honest. Like, I can't imagine it's approved in any situation. There's no safety. There's no security. Apart from the fact we have to call the RCMP anytime anything happens. And it's crazy that that's the plan. The plan is leave it to the RCMP. They can pick up the pieces when anything goes wrong. It's really not a great plan. Obviously, there's worse plans. Let's not do anything. But luckily, we have cleaning and properly maintenance to make us feel safe. Does that really fill you with confidence? It doesn't fill me with confidence. And it doesn't make me feel like B C Housing has put a lot of effort into this with one simple slide. And if you go through that thing, all the slides are basically like this. It's pretty poor. And I, I don't trust them. And I think they haven't put any effort in to make us feel better as nearby residents. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ed. Okay, just checking back in with Byron Wood. I see you've reconnected to the meeting. Can we hear you? I'm sorry, Byron. I cannot hear you. What's the ID? So we've put the webinar ID up on the slide. Can you see the ID on the slide? The slide's not being seen by the home. Let's make it the main screen.
It's 679. Oh, you got it. 10218298.
Okay. The next speaker I have is Corey Cost, and then hopefully we'll be able to connect with Byron Wood up to that point. Corey Cost. Can you hear me?
Yes, your worship. I hope you can hear and see me.
I can hear you. We're going to keep the slide up if that's okay, Dr. Cost, just so that people can access the meeting through that means, if possible. And I believe, just double checking, this is your third time speaking. Is that correct?
I was hoping it was only my third, because you know, it's hard to keep track of how many times you speak and that's.
But our record says third, so there you go.
Okay, good. But I do need to share the screen eventually before I finish. Just two minor points. Okay. Maybe that will help. Share the screen while that's on. I'll come back to this.
You should be able to share your screen now.
Okay, can you see the? Shared screen?
It looks like it's generating right now. Yes, I can see your screen.
And I hope that's large enough print, but I'll deal with that after just a couple of points and I'll keep things short. First is just a question. Will this supportive housing be available to new or soon to be new mothers who are at risk of losing custody of their children? It's a bit of a loaded question. But I think it'd be useful for council to have that answer. This is just for single males and single females who are not pregnant or about ready to be, you know, give birth to a child or not. The second thing is that there was some concern, and I think it should be known that all of these rooms in this facility will have the appropriate sprinkler systems installed. So there should be no fires that can spread from one unit to another readily. I think people should feel safe in these accommodations. Finally, I just want to outline what I think is a confusion of many housing terms that are used in Canada. And only one is before us tonight. The one I highlighted is supportive housing. But the, all the others are not necessarily distinct. They may be combinations of them, as there probably are in this supportive housing. There are a few of those that belong in what is called a category of mental health housing. But I thought it would be useful for council to have, what I, certainly it's not an exhaustive term. And some of the terms are no longer probably in use. But it might assist council in determining the classes of different housing styles. Not the style in the category of it's a duplex or a single family home or things like this. This is a different category of mainly different use of these facilities. That's all I have to say tonight, and thank you for allowing me to have a third opportunity to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Corey Cost. Now I'm gonna, I do see a virtual speaker coming in by the phone system. And possibly Byron Wood. We'll just double check. So to unmute your microphone in that system is star six. Maybe we can put the slide back up, but there you go. Okay.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Is this Byron Wood?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, clearly. Welcome. Glad we finally were able to connect with you. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, thanks a lot for your patience. So my name is Byron Wood. I live in Lynn Valley. And I'm calling in support of the project. Myself, I actually have a mental illness and I use drugs. And I also like to think that I'm a good person. My family, my friends, my coworkers, they think that I'm a good person. Fortunately, I've never been homeless. But if I was homeless, I'd like to think that my community members in the district in North Ban would support me and welcome me into a building like this. So adequate housing was recognized as part of the right to an adequate standard of living in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights in 1948. Also in 1956, the International Convention on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights. In 2019, it in Parliament passed the National Housing Strategy Act. And the act recognizes housing as a human right and commits organizations and governments to reform housing laws and policies like the one you're discussing now and programs from a human rights perspective. Act states that, hold on just one second. Act states that those in the greatest need of housing, the ones that we're talking about right now, must be prioritized. So the number of people in, in experiencing homelessness on the north shore has increased by 39% between 2020 and 2023. And these are people who are in, in our community right now, our community members, our neighbors. They're sleeping outside in the rain and in the cold and they're struggling just to stay alive. We must prioritize their need for housing. A need for more housing far away is what is currently being built. And the B C Minister of Housing has instructed the district in North Ban to build more supportive housing. And we have this opportunity right now. Having a safe and secure place to live is central to human dignity, well-being and community. Housing is the basis of stability and security for people. Housing is the center of our social, emotional and economic lives. The proposed housing project would provide 65 studio apartments for our community members. Supportive housing not only provides people with protection from elements, it also connects people with services, keeps people healthy and allows people to thrive and succeed in their community. I'm urging everyone to put aside any stereotypical beliefs that they may have and they may hold about our community, community members and our neighbors who currently do not have homes and are experiencing poverty. I'm urging council and community members to prioritize the neighbors' human rights to houses over their own resistance to changing a community. We need to come together as a community and we need to support each other. This supportive housing project must be built. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Byron Wood. The next speaker I have is Jamie Root, joining us virtually. Jamie Root, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Clearly. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Hi, good evening and thank you for giving me the time to speak. I'll keep it very short. As I said, my name is Jamie. I'm a local resident. I'm a property taxpayer and I'm a voter. I'm calling to put on record my strong opposition to this proposal. After listening to the last couple of hearings, my biggest concern is the disconnect between the information provided on the district and North Vancouver website and what has been discussed in these hearings. The district of North Vancouver site makes the proposal sound like this will be a facility for recovery and healing. But I'm failing to see how having a website allowing free use of drugs and alcohol with a safe injection site can help anybody. All my concerns have been previously discussed, but I have to say, I'm getting more confused on how this facility is going to be operated. To echo others, the info is just not provided. I think council needs to revisit this and restart the process by having more information sessions as I'm hearing such a strong disconnect and what is actually going to happen. I too have also been wondering how our questions are being answered, as I have submitted questions and was just told my email will be put on the record. Mary Little, you explained earlier that those questions could have already been answered. And we are to search through the records to see if we can find those answers. I wouldn't have known that unless I attended this meeting and just assumed that no one cared about my concerns. You also mentioned, and I'm not sure if I heard it correctly, that throughout this process, you're not obligated to answer any or all of the questions that are submitted. Given that we are on night four of this topic, I think more effort needs to be put in to answer all questions and put the community's concerns at ease. At this point, I'm not convinced this facility will have any positive impact in our community. There is no dispute whether you are for or against this, that we want people, that we do not want people to be safe. But there are just too many unanswered questions. And as somebody who worked in project planning, I know that this project would not pass the first step in any other organization, given the amount of clarification required. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments, Jamie Root. Is anybody else wishing to speak in the hearing for a first, second or third time? You're, you've done two times. You're on your third time. Is that correct? Yeah, come on up, Paul.
I'll keep it short. It's just sort of the last couple of notes I had with my statements from earlier. The, again, well, none of us are disagreeing that people do need help. It's just we're talking about how this model does not seem to be working. The, it's my opinion, after basically doing a lot of work, going to help people on these busy housing sites, that, you know, at this point, they should be criminally liable for the lack of effort that they do to actually keep these places clean and healthy. When I go onto multiple patients that have open source with bedbugs crawling in and out of their open source, the lack of effort that these like B C Housing and these communities do to actually keep these places safe and clean, to promote the well-being of these people is criminal. It, basically, we're putting this, we want to put this site in to actually help people. If we let it get to the site, as they've demonstrated with the sites I've seen before, it's not going to help anybody. And I wouldn't want to see anybody go through what I've seen people go through in some of these sites. Like this, it's beyond deplorable. And frankly, people do deserve better than that. And basically, ramming a whole bunch of people into a small space like this is, it's not a recipe for success. We, you know, we don't have the resources to help the people. And these people aren't just people that are sleeping outside on the streets and they're cold. These are people with systemic mental health issues that are unable to take care of themselves. And it's by being unable to take care of themselves. You know, basically, giving them a roof over their head is not going to solve a systemic series of problems that they already have. They talk about having staff on site to help these people, but, you know, they already are underfunded. You know, they, they made it clear on their website that they're underfunded and they're still spending over budget. So again, while a lot of us are saying that we're not compassionate because we want to, we don't want this to help people, that it, I think it's quite the opposite. We actually want the people to get help. We just don't want to sort of see the continuing pattern of basically what we've seen through other shelters through the Lower Mainland. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, would anybody else like to address the hearing a first, second or third time? Okay, in court. Okay, so where that's going to take us, though, it means that we have not exhausted the speaker's list, which means that the, unless I get a unanimous vote of council, then we'll be carrying on to a fifth public hearing night. And so I'm going to put the question to the council as a vote. I will move the recommendation that we carry on the meeting to 11:30 tonight. Is there a second or for that motion? Seconded by councillor Back. I'm going to call the question on that motion. All those in favor? Contrary minded. The motion is, requires unanimous consent. It is defeated. And so the meeting will not continue past 11 o'clock, which means I do not have enough time to offer you a full five minute opportunity to speak. And so at this point, I am going to go through the process to conclude the meeting. I had four opposed. I only need one opposed. The policy, or three, I had councillors Hanson, Forbes and councillor Murya. I didn't see your vote, but I only needed one, so. Anyway.
Okay, so we have Forbes and.
Forbes and Hanson opposed, so you don't have unanimous consent. So we don't meet our own tests for that. So. So then I need to check in with the clerk before we hit that 11 o'clock number. We do need to announce within this meeting when the fifth night will be held. And I want to confirm that we've affirmed that the council's available on January 15th. And it is our intent to continue the meeting to 7:00 PM on January 15th. Is that your understanding?
Your worship, we council caucused at the break and has established that 7:00 PM, Monday, January 15th, for the continuation of this hearing. We have not, staff have not researched the calendars to ensure they're available, but all council members did consent to that night, presumably their council.
Can I just interrupt in a point of order here? Can we just ask the resident if he would be interested in speaking for less than five minutes, so that we don't have to go to?
If we hit 11, the meeting automatically stops. We have to do this before we hit that number. We've got less than, we've got less than three minutes. And I still haven't gone back out to the room to exhaust it. So I'm going to, we're, we're on this path.
Yes, your worship, just to reiterate your point. If we reach 11 o'clock without having officially announced the date, time and place, the meeting ends and we have to go through a notification process all over again. We, if we can do the date, time, place notification, as we've, we're just in the process of confirming, then everybody here will know the, when to return for the continuation. And so I, I was saying, council, we, again, we haven't checked the calendars. Council all was in the room and said that that night was available. So staff are recommending 7:00 PM, Monday, January 15th as a continuation. I'm assuming that's okay. And if that's it, that's where things end tonight.
Thank you very much. I'll accept adjournment, accept it from councillor Forbes. So again, the matter continues on. We'll, we'll resume the meeting with you as the first speaker. There will be more. You're not alone. Don't worry. You weren't the reason for this. I don't want to put that on your shoulders. And, and the public's comments are always welcome. But we will resume on January 15th and it will again be open to the public comment at that time and we'll follow the same procedure. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.